Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, February 23rd Town Council Meeting. All of our votes this evening will be via a roll call vote. With that, I will ask Clerk Sue Semino to do a roll call vote to open the meeting, please.
Councilor Erika.
Here.
Councilor Connors.
Here.
Councilor Flaherty.
Here.
Councilor Hume.
Here.
Councilor Mackin.
Here.
Councilor O'Brien.
Present.
Councilor Ringus.
Here.
Councilor Ryan.
Here.
Councilor Sasha.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. All right, we're going to take a couple items out of order at the request of Mayor Coros. He asked if he could speak first, so I will turn it over to you, Mayor Coros, for two items that you would like to talk about. And then, if it's okay with the committee, we're also going to take item 00421. Sorry, we're going to move the donations up, so the mayor can speak on that as well. So, Mayor Coros.
Thank you, Chairman. President Hume, as well as members of the council. I just wanted to just give a little a little bit of a summary of our capital plan. I'm pleased to present my second capital plan. I wish we had better financial times. We have focused on the needs as opposed to the wants in this capital plan. One of the things that you'll see as you review it is that we are maintaining our roads and infrastructure program and continue to fund it so that we can stay ahead of the game in regards to maintaining our roadways and water source and other infrastructure needs. We also have some additional items that we'll be working on as well. Continued, we'll be continuing our funding of our schools as far as prioritizing capital needs there as well. And you'll see some other items, ADA enhancements, which are very important. The finalization of the Elder Affairs parking lot being redone. And a number of other things that need to either be repaired or replaced. And I thank you for the opportunity to present the capital plan. I know it's going to committee and I appreciate all the hard work that you're going to do on it. And my staff will be available for any questions as you move through the process. And of course, at this point, we are starting to look at the budget and that will be a topic for another day. But the capital plan is before you and you'll have the opportunity to review it. I did want to talk about, there's actually two other things I want to talk about. One is sort of a coronavirus update. We have currently 3,826 cases that we've had in Braintree to date. And unfortunately, we have lost 132 lives to coronavirus. I'd just like to, you know, mention the fact that we have had such great success with the vaccination clinics. And this is due to the hard work of our staff members. Mary Beth and Nicole have really coordinated these events and done a great job at doing so. And I think without their expertise, we probably wouldn't be where we're at today as far as how many vaccinations we've done, which is over 1,400. We've had many staff members, Kate Nodden and Steve Larry, and a number of other folks, the school nurses, as well as our nurses, have participated in the Saturday clinics that we've had and all the clinics that we've had to make them successful. And we've worked really hard. And Brewster has been a great partner with us. They've helped us in acquiring additional doses that they have been able to provide, not only to our elderly housing, but here at Town Hall during our clinics. I just want to make it perfectly clear to everyone that's listening and the press and my mother and everyone else out there that there is a second dose for everyone that's received the first dose. Once again, if you receive the first dose, you will receive a second dose. The governor's order recently to shut off all of the vaccines that would be coming to local health departments, which is extremely disappointing. It's not going to affect the second dose. I confirmed that today with the Lieutenant Governor. I will say that we will continue to fight to get the vaccine into our town halls so that local health boards can administer the vaccine. We have a tremendous layout plan. We've tweaked it multiple times. And it is convenient for our elderly population. We really just want to get through our most vulnerable population. And then, as we move on to the other phases, I think that when we get to different parts of Phase Two, it would be appropriate to use these larger sites. But right now, we don't want our elderly population traveling 50 miles plus to get a vaccine. They can come in at Town Hall, it's comfortable. They sit down, they go through the registration, they get their vaccine. They get to sit for 15 minutes. Brewster Ambulance is there to help monitor. It's really well organized and that's thanks to all the hard work of my staff in Brewster Ambulance. So, I want to thank them for all of their works. I know that they've put in so many hours and making the appointments, being here till, at Town Hall till eight and nine o'clock at night is a regular thing. So, I just want to thank them. Lastly, so once again, first shot, you get a second shot. But lastly, I just wanted to give an update on the schools. We had a school committee meeting last night. And at the school committee meeting, we spoke of, and a motion was made on a reopening date. Now, there is, you know, negotiations and talks that go on in regards to this change that we're making. And the date is March 15th for the high school. That would be March 15th for full five, full day, five days a week classes at the high school. High school currently has both cohorts combined. So, it really isn't a big stretch to extend the day. So, it is very doable and that would be the first milestone. And that's March 15th. The second milestone would be our middle and elementary schools as of April 1st. So, those are the dates that have been set by the school committee. And we have a team working with the BEA. And we also have the superintendent and all of his staff working to coordinate, making it possible to bring the kids back. And that would be, in both cases, full days, five days a week with lunch, et cetera. So, that's just an update on the schools. And lastly, I just wanted, I know that there's a couple of folks that are coming up, two young ladies, Sophia and Felicia. And I just want to thank them for coming forward with their idea. And, you know, you'll hear from them later. So, I'm not going to spoil it, but definitely support 100% what they have come up with. And I think it's great to have them thinking about others and really appreciate that. And lastly, I guess, really lastly, is as far as the donation. Fortunately, members of the mayoral ball function, which was extremely successful, which I had nothing to do with, I will say. And there's so many people that did such a great job. And I know Noah Brown is online and I know that, you know, he was such a great coordinator in regards to it, from picking out the first song to all, a number of other things that he was able to do. And also Laura Graziano, I know that Kate Naughton was involved and Council President, another contributor. So, I just want to thank you all and it's nice that we can take the remaining proceeds and we can put them to good use here in the town. But I thank you all for the ability to speak first. And respectfully, thank you, Madam President. And I appreciate all the hard work that everyone of you do. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor Coros, for that as well. So, if it's okay with the committee, if we can take up the old business item 21002, the mayor acceptance of donations or take up any action relative there too. Anybody object to that? We'll just follow up that while the mayor's here. I know he has another prior commitment to, good to. So, if we can approve these while he's on the line, and we do have Noah Brown here with us, who is the co-chair of that committee. And I think the mayor had a lot of great things to say, but totally undersold the capabilities of Noah Brown and Laura Graziano. It was one of the best events ever. It was such a great time. There was no detail left unnoticed and it was amazing. Noah, I didn't know you before that. I'm going to unmute you, but you were absolutely phenomenal. And you've become friends and so good to see you here tonight. Sue Semino was also on that committee as well. Noah, I don't know if you want to say something. You're here with us tonight, so go ahead.
Yeah, absolutely. My pleasure. Can everyone hear me? I'm still getting used to, even after a year of Zoom. Thank you so much, everyone. By the way, it's really nice to see so many of you because last time, I think we saw, I saw all of you. I was in a sequin tuxedo jacket and lining you all up frantically for your first ceremonial entrance. So, nice to see you all again. You know, it's such a pleasure, Mr. Mayor, Madam President, and members of the Town Council to be able to do this for our beloved town. In January 2020, which might as well have been 150 years ago compared to what we've been through, the Friends of Charles Kokoros Committee held the Blue and White Ball to celebrate the inauguration of our new mayor. After the inauguration, all residual funds were then donated to a mixture of school PTOs and other civic organizations in our town. Tonight, on behalf of the Friends of Charles Kokoros Committee, it gives me great pleasure to request acceptance from Town Council to donate the following. $435 to Braintree Elder Affairs, which will be used to provide assistance to defray the cost of elder residents in need of transportation. And $5,000 to Braintree's Department of Veteran Services to be used as needed in support of and gratitude for the men and women who have served our country so bravely.
Great. Thank you so much, Noah. I am doing this a little out of order. And we also have with us tonight Grace Parley and Nancy Parley, who also have a donation. I don't know if the two of you would like to speak on yours. And then, I will get to our Chairwoman of Committee on Ways and Means. So, my apologies for going out of order so early in the meeting. Would the two of you like to speak? I'm going to, hold on, let's unmute you. You have to unmute yourselves. I can't.
Yep.
There you go.
I unmuted. Is Grace there?
Yeah, okay. Hi.
Hi.
Thanks for being with us.
Thank you. Thank you so much for letting us make this donation in memory of our mother and father. I'm getting sad. Okay, my mother and father were lifelong residents of Braintree. And my mother just passed away in August. She was 95 years old. And we've lived in Braintree, well, she lived in Braintree all her life. My great-grandfather built our house in 1900. And we were going through some letters of hers that my father wrote to her during World War II. And all she did was talk about Braintree. And she loved Braintree. All of us, I'm one of five, and we've all graduated from Braintree. My mother graduated in '42 and my father graduated in '39. And we wanted to just donate in memory of them to a music program. And so, we decided, Nancy and I, that we wanted to, I was going to give $10,000 and Nancy's going to give $10,000. And we're going to give it to anything that has to do with music. Doesn't have to be band-related. My mother played the trombone in the band in high school. And my father was very involved with the Drum and Bugle Corps. And so, we decided that we were going to give it to anything that has to do with music, a band, choir, anything. And we were going to give $2,000 a year, $1,000 to a girl, $1,000 to a boy. And that it would be, probably, we would be adding on to it because we're going to do something yearly that we will be able to contribute. So, it won't just be the 10 years. It's going to go on hopefully for longer than that. And that's it. But Nancy, you want to say something?
I just wanted to say one thing. When we were talking at the 6:30 meeting and some of you had said, you know, you were in the drama club or different things like that. When we were going through my mom's house, she saved every single playbill that she went to. I don't even know how many of those playbills there were, but I mean, she saved everything. She just, she loved all that. She loved the music. And we're just thrilled to do this.
She even had a playbill from Sonia Henne from 19, what was it, 19?
Yes.
Well, thank you both for being with us.
I don't know what it was.
For the generous donation. I'm sorry for the loss of your mother. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chairwoman of Ways and Means, Councilor Erika, for your recommendation from the Ways and Means that met earlier this evening.
Thank you very much, President Hume. And I think going out of order was actually perfect because both Mr. Brown and the Parley's said it better than I could. But the, so we met this after, this evening at 6:30 and we voted unanimously. And I think I will add on behalf of the committee with gratitude and bring a favorable recommendation to the full council for these generous donations.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And with that, anybody from the council was to speak on this? Seeing none, is there a motion, Councilor Ringus?
So moved, President Hume.
And there's a motion that the Town of Braintree be and hereby is authorized in accordance with Section 53A of Chapter 44 of the Massachusetts General Laws to accept the following gifts upon the conditions attached and herein set forth. The donor, Grace and Nancy Parley, a gift of $20,000 for the purpose of the Dottie and Bob Parley Scholarship Fund, the Friends of Charles Kokoros, the gift of $5,000 to the Town of Braintree Department of Veteran Services, and the Friends of Charles Kokoros for $435, the Town of Braintree Department of Elder Affairs. There's been a motion made, Councilor Ringus.
Seconded, those wonderful donations. Thank you.
Seconded by Counselor Ryan. Yes, thank you all. Clerk Semino, a roll call vote, please.
Councilor Erika.
Yes.
Councilor Connors.
Aye.
Councilor Flaherty.
Yes.
Councilor Hume.
Aye.
Councilor Mackin.
Aye.
Councilor O'Brien.
Aye.
Councilor Ringus.
Aye.
Councilor Ryan.
Aye.
Councilor Sasha.
Yes.
That's nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you all. That is unanimous. And thank you all again for being here and for the very generous donations on all of you. You're more than welcome to stay with us tonight or you can go about your business. But again, we appreciate you being here and for all your generosity and.
Thank you very much and have a wonderful night.
Thank you all for having me. Thank you so much.
Okay, we are getting back to the agenda, moving on to announcements. Item 00621, Council President, COVID-19 Temporary Memorial or Take Up Any Action Relative There Too. The mayor mentioned, we have a letter here from two residents, Sophia Barardinelli and Felicia McDevitt, who are both here with us in attendance this evening. They are looking for, as the mayor had stated, to remember those Braintree residents who have lost their lives. So, as was stated previously, I think I'm going to turn it over to the both of these young ladies to let them speak. I think those words were, do a better job than I ever could. So, with that, Felicia and Sophia, if you want to unmute, you can both talk about your.
All right, hello. We just have a small sort of joint statement. We're each going to say a few sentences, which kind of just sums up our proposal. So, as of February 23rd, there have been 132 COVID-19-related deaths in the Town of Braintree. Nationally, we have recently passed 500,000 deaths due to this horrible disease. We feel that this pandemic has impacted each of us and that's essential to acknowledge the town's collective struggle. As members of this community, we feel that creating a temporary memorial in a public area in the town would help recognize that struggle. Our goal for us is to place flags on the ground side by side in a common outdoor space. And each flag will represent a resident. We want to have a sign that accompanies these flags, memorializing the community members that we have lost, saying to the Braintree residents who have lost their lives to COVID-19. And Felicia, passing it off to you.
Beautiful. So, Sophia and I both believe that this project is an important reminder of the importance of civic engagement and of supporting grieving families in town. And we would like our local government to recognize how serious this virus is. And as Sophia said, how deep of an impact it has had on our community. And we believe that this is an important opportunity for the town to serve as a point of unification and to provide a sense of comfort for everyone who is grieving and mourning and strained in any way during this time. And as Mayor Coros noted, the three of us met earlier this evening and he gave support for the memorial, but we're here to follow up and to continue a dialogue with all of you on how to move forward. And now, we're looking for any feedback or ideas from you all.
Thank you both. I did have the opportunity to speak to Sophia. And as the mayor stated, that he will fully support this and the town will support it as we've done in the past with other memorials, is the flags out on the Town Hall, which I know, Sophia, that was, you mentioned something you were interested in. And I'm sure the digital signboards would be something. But if, I know I'll be supportive of it. We'll be putting forward a letter to the mayor's office too. It will be an official vote, but anybody who wants to sign that, so we'll put that together and can reach out to you. But we'll fully support it and whatever we can do to help. And I know the mayor will do whatever he can too. So, I thank you both for coming before us. One with the letter and the great idea to remember the people who have lost their lives. Last night, the president recognized and held a moment of silence for all the US residents. So, I think it's only fitting that we do the same here in Braintree for our residents because each one of, each, every, each and every resident is important. And this is just, we've all been through so much this past year. So, I think it's so impressive. I know both you young ladies are college age. And so, to take action and get involved in your community, I commend you. I know you've been very active in the high school when you were there. And I know we're going to be seeing more of you in the future. So, keep doing what you're doing. We appreciate it. And this is such a worthy cause and a great initiative you've put before, or put before us. Any other council want to speak on this? Okay, seeing none, do either of you have any final words?
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you so much. Counselor Erika, did you have a hand raised?
I did. Thank you.
Go ahead.
And thank you to Sophia and Felicia. And I just wanted to mention to those in our audience or at home, I would encourage you to get the Town Council documents that can be found online. Miss Sophia and Felicia wrote an eloquent and moving essay that is amongst our documents. And I would encourage everyone to read it because it was impressive and very fitting for the time. So, thank you. Thank you both again.
All right. Well, again, like I said, you are more than welcome to stay with us tonight, but we'll be in touch and I'm sure, I'm sure we'll see something in the near future on your accomplishments with this project. Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda, 00721, Counselor Mackin, full day in-person learning or take up any action relative there too. Counselor Mackin.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And thank you, Sophia and Felicia, for that presentation. That is a very thoughtful memorial. So, we haven't had a meeting in a little while, but I've been very involved with the group of parents. And, you know, they had asked me to speak on their behalf. And since we hadn't had a meeting in a bit, I didn't announce until last week. And the mayor's announcement last night was great and it was great that he joined us before this meeting. So, over the past nine months, I've become very close with many of the parents who want their children fully back in school. I've had countless conversations and I even attended their demonstration in front of Town Hall in mid-December, where I was able to meet in person many of the people I've been speaking with in the previous months. It was amazing the many different negative effects remote learning has had on their kids that they described to me. More than one of them told me that their child cries every day now and they're not sure what to do. Several weeks ago, one of these parents emailed the Council President and myself and asked why the council had not waited on this issue yet. A week later, another one of these parents asked me if I could help bring the matter of getting children back to school full-time before the council as they felt that they didn't have any leadership support in town. So, prolonged remote learning in isolation has caused a mental health crisis in children across the country. And Braintree has not been immune to that. Statistics on mental health incidents among children and teenagers have soared over the past year. There's also been a spike in child and teen suicides across the country. We should be thanking God that hasn't happened here in Braintree yet and ending this situation before it does. Last week, a teacher reached out to me and told me how he had been teaching his remote classes from in-school every day. I quote, "Because that's where the teacher should be." And as teachers, our priority should be what's best for the kids. I think some people forgot that. I know there are a large number of teachers here in Braintree who feel the same way as he does and have been having an equally terrible time through all this as most of the kids have. He also stated, told me that last month, some of his students had started writing letters to members of the administration stating their desire to return to school. It's sad it's got to the point where the kids are advocating for themselves to go back full-time. You know, every private school in the country was back fully in-person in September, including Chevrolet and Braintree. In numerous states, every public school was safely back fully in September. In other states, some districts were back fully in September while others were not. My point here is how many, how is it that so many districts across the country were safely executing full-day in-person learning plans six months ago? But here in Braintree, we still don't even have one. Learning the answer to that question is why I had summoned the leaders of the Braintree Teachers Union and the superintendent to this meeting, which did not happen. Last night, the school committee voted in favor of returning to full-day in-person learning. While this is great to hear, it is contingent on the Braintree Education Association agreeing to it. The BEA initially rejected a school committee directive regarding a hybrid plan proposal back in early September. Therefore, it is possible for them to reject a directive again. I suggest the council request to see full details of plans to return by a date certain to ensure progress. I also suggest that as a town, we start exploring disciplinary options for refusing a directive. Braintree was once a town where many people wanted to move because of the schools. Now, I know many parents who have pulled their children out of Braintree schools and sent them to private schools to learn fully in-person. And I know double the number who are on waitlist to private schools. I know parents who have pulled their kids out of Braintree schools and are now homeschooling them due to dissatisfaction with the remote curriculum. Now, even though a family that's moved out of Braintree, so their children are attending public schools fully in-person. It has been said that having one safely was an impediment to full-day learning here in Braintree. While out of the thousands of schools that successfully addressed this issue six months ago, I'm sure that one of them has a plan that we could copy and tailor to us. Let's find that. We recently spent $83 million in a school that's been empty around 80% of the time for the past year. Surely, there's a better way to enter this investment. Let's do it. I believe the time to get our children back fully in school arrived a long time ago. And the council should get involved to help this happen if needed. Whatever the issues that are preventing it, let's find them and solve them. I'm a big believer in the concept of where there is a will, there's a way. All one has to do is drive around town to see all the signs that say, "Education is essential," reopen the schools to see that there is a will in the town. We can find a way. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of minutes, November 4th, 2020. Is there a motion to approve the minutes in November 4th, 2020?
So moved, Madam President.
Seconded.
There's been a motion made by Counselor Ringus, seconded by Counselor Ryan. Clerk Semino, a roll call vote, please. Why, just do them all together?
That would be great. Mind you that?
Okay.
Madam President, I'd also move to approve the minutes of Tuesday, November 17th, 2020. Seconded.
Okay, so there's been a motion to approve the minutes in November 4th and November 17th, 2020 by Counselor Ringus, seconded by Counselor Ryan. Clerk Semino, roll call vote, please.
Councilor Erika.
Yes.
Councilor Connors.
Aye.
Councilor Flaherty.
Yes.
Yes.
Council Hume.
Aye.
Council Macken.
Aye.
Council O'Brien.
Aye, but I have my hand raised because there's an error in the November fourth. Um, notes that needs to be remedied. I have no problem voting for it, but if you could go through uh Clerk Samino. In one of the rules, I voted both for and against.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll have that discussion.
With correction, aye.
Thank you. Council.
Council O'Brien, thank you.
Aye.
Council Ryan.
Aye.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
You, that is unanimous. Okay, moving on to communications and reports from the mayor and town boards, item zero one two two zero, Council President COVID update. We have with us tonight Mary Beth McGrath, the Director of Municipal Licenses and Inspections. So with that, I will turn it over to you, Director McGrath.
Thank you, Council President Hume and council members for, again, entertaining me to come back and visit with you. I do appreciate the opportunity and I know that you all. Keep up the data as to what's happening through the information on the town's website and through the mayor's office, but it's nice to be able to to appear before you to discuss what's happening. So as Mayor Corus mentioned earlier this evening, uh, as of today, we have three thousand eight hundred and twenty-six cumulative confirmed cases. Although that's a very high number, over the last two weeks, we've definitely seen a decrease in daily numbers of cases, which we're really grateful for. I'm glad to see that swing turning in that direction. I do have a bit of a concern. Last week, we did have the school break and so usually about two weeks after we see this type of a vacation. Phase that we sometimes do see spikes in cases. So I'm hoping that we don't see that. But if we do that, hoping that it's not very high or very much. Unfortunately, Mayor Corus has had mentioned as well, we have seen one hundred and thirty-two cases up from one twenty, one hundred and twenty cases last time I visited with you. And that's very unfortunate and we're sorry to see that that has happened. We hope that that does not, that trend does not continue. Um, I did also want to mention, as Mayor Corus had mentioned, that we have been um engaged with vaccination clinics. And those have been going exceptionally well. We're very, very pleased with uh the turnout and we've gotten a very positive response from residents. Regarding the clinics as well. So we're really happy that their, their experience has been a very good one. I do feel it's very, very important to give a lot of thanks to to specific people because there's been a lot of work. These, these just don't um. You know, people walk into the auditorium and it's all, everything's set up and uh it it goes very smoothly, but there's a lot of work behind the scenes that occurs to get to that point. And as well during the clinic. So a huge thank you um from me to Mayor Corus, Nicole Tob, our Chief of Staff. All of our school and public health nurses, and I know I sing their praises all the time and I will continue to do that. Brewster Ambulance has been a huge resource in helping us not only for our observation area, but also in assisting with vaccinations. I do also want to mention um some individuals that don't always get recognition, but I think it's important that they do. Kate Notton and Stephen Larry in the mayor's office have been instrumental in helping us with our clinics, both behind the scenes and at the clinic as well. Shamilla and her staff assisted us at our last big clinic, which was Saturday, the thirteenth of February. Also from my office, Christina Zanidi, Kate Sandstrom and Russ Forsberg have really been instrumental in helping with preparation of. Registration forms, vaccination cards. Again, it's a lot of preparatory work beforehand to get to the point where we can um usher. Our residents safely in and out of a clinic within thirty minutes, which we're really happy to do that because the registration alone takes a little bit of time. And then the fifteen minutes of observation as well. So we're really happy that we can get them in and out in a quick and safe manner. And they all seem very pleased with it. We would certainly like to continue to do that. Unfortunately, there has been some change at the state level in what local. Cities and towns will now not be receiving. So we're hoping that there may be some changes in the decisions made. So that we can continue our vaccination program. But I know Mayor Corus is working very hard to try and partner with um other agency to see if we can do so. So we will keep you posted as that progresses. Thank you.
Thank you, Director McGrath. I do, I hope that um does happen because I know that many people who are getting, all the people who are getting the vaccines now are elderly. A lot of which have mobility issues and going to the Fenway and Gillette's and the bigger uh venues, if you will. Are are a problem. I mean, one for travel, but also from walking from the parking lot to that. So I appreciate the efforts from Mayor Coros. And you on that and all um throughout this pandemic. And as always, for being here tonight with us to give us an update on it, truly appreciate that. And please extend that to all your staff as well. I know you guys have been working around the clock on this.
Thank you.
Uh, anybody from the council have any questions or comments for Director McGrath? Councilor O'Brien, go ahead.
Thank you, President Hume. Um, Mary Beth, Director McGrath, I should say, I'm sorry. Uh, have we had any of the international variants in town?
As of this date, no. Okay, we've not had any reports of it.
Okay. And and separately, one of the things that um kind of irks people like me in these positions is when you turn on the radio or the TV and. You hear the ton of Braintree mentioned in any way, shape or form, because generally that is a negative. Um, and unfortunately, a couple of weeks ago, I heard uh on the news that uh we had a COVID breakout in the school system. Um, I understand that you're integrally involved in helping them with uh their decision-making. And I was just wondering if you could just chime in on um. You know, if if you know anything about that, because I didn't dig into it any further. I didn't feel the need for it. But um I was just curious uh what your thoughts are relative to school opening. I know that the CDC has come out. And said that uh that it is possible, but I believe there's a massive cost in some cases just for air ventilation. I know the. High school was significantly impacted. Um, I'd just like to hear from the director's perspective. Thank you.
Okay, well, as far as the schools, I am not um directly involved in the decision-making. I offer recommendations based on the science. To the school administration and school committee, but it's their responsibility and role to make the decisions for the operation of the school. Uh, as far as the school reopening, as Mayor Corus mentioned, and what's planned coming, starting March fifteenth, I fully support it. Um, the science shows us that the cases that are occurring are community spread cases. They're not occurring in specific classrooms. One of the biggest areas that we're noticing some cases as far as school association with students is in sports, hockey and and basketball primarily. And that has been an issue day since day one involving sports. Um, and it started in the spring and summer with baseball and it continued into the fall and winter with, of course, hockey and basketball. So that's always been a concern, but that's a community issue that basically trickles back to the school and it's unfortunate. As far as the operation of the school, I fully support the children going back to school, as I've mentioned to the school committee and school administration. Uh, and on last night's meeting and previous meetings. Not only is it important that the children get back to school physically, but it's also important for their mental and emotional health. Because that is equally as important as the fiscal aspect of them getting there. And I have to express and I have been for some time very concerned about their emotional and mental well-being. And I feel like that we need to do better. And one way of doing that is we need to jump into the deep end at some point. To get the kids back to school to see what's going to work. The six feet has been working. And slowly, there's been some modifications to that, which I'm grateful for in the school system. And things are, things seem to still be working well. So we need to move to the next step and get the kids back into school and see what's going to happen and see how, well, that's going to work. You have a wonderful staff in the school systems. The nurses, again, I have boasted about them from day one and I will continue to do so. They're doing a great job. And they're helping with contact tracing. They're helping the children to be in a healthy and safe manner, as well as the school administration. So I really feel like it's time to move forward and see how this is going to work. And you know, that's, we have the opportunity to kind of see how this is going to work. And then if we have to back off a bit, then you have the opportunity to do that, but we won't know how it's going to work until we move forward with it. So I fully support the, the students going back to school in a more full-time manner.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other counselor? Seeing none, Director McGrath, thank you again. I'm sure we'll hear from you with our next meeting as well. Moving on, item zero zero four two one, Council President, update from Chief, Police Chief Dubois. So. Back in two thousand and nineteen, I believe Chief Dubois started as the new police chief in here in Braintree. So I spoke to him way back when and said, let's do it. And after a hundred days in office, a hundred days in the position, how it goes. And then COVID came in and then life got in the way and I wanted to do it in person and. We're still remote, so didn't want to pass up this opportunity. I know there's been a lot going on with the police department. We also have with us Deputy Chief Tim Cahoon. So thank you both for being here tonight. Uh, with that, Police Chief Dubois, I will turn it over to you.
Uh, thank you, President uh Hume and uh all the council members. Uh, yeah, this was gonna be um done about probably nine, ten months ago. So a little overdue, but I I'm gonna try and summarize about um twenty twenty for everybody, just to highlight a few things that we've uh. Accomplished and what we're working on and then, you know, a couple of things that work um that have happened. So uh, as far as personnel changes go, um, we've had. Four retirements and uh one resignation. Um, we had five new hires. Well, one military leave. Uh, one of our officers has been in Kuwait for about nine months. And is returning uh very shortly, uh, the end of this month or early March. Um, and then we had three promotions, one sergeant and um probably the, quite honestly, the best, the best thing that's happened to me for the, for the past year is the two deputy chiefs getting promoted. Uh, Tim Cahoon and Mike Want. And um they, I just round off the uh, the team is is with Lieutenant Dave Delpapa. Um, in in the administration wing, but these guys just, they, every day, they just do incredible work and uh. The, all the success is basically because of them, tho- those three, but definitely uh Tim and and Mike. But. Um, the, the total budget, uh, budgeted numbers is we have eighty-six that we plan on. Uh, we currently have eighty-five officers with two in the police academy. They just started um two weeks ago. And um, there's also anticipated retire, retirement between now and the uh, the end of the year. So we're gonna be down two officers for the fiscal year and and that's actually pretty good. Um, it, uh, the mayor's office let it, uh, approved uh four new hires a few months ago and it it's definitely made a big difference for us. So um, the, the big discussion that President Hume and I had early on and in um with uh the Chief of Staff. Was kind of dealing with uh some of the overtime issues, the budget issues that we have with overtime. So about a year ago, the two new deputy chiefs at the time, but they got appointed on March first. Um, so in early March last year, we, along with the um finance team. We had a strategic planning meeting um that we spent quite a bit of time on. Um, to just, I see where we can make some adjustments. Um, you know, where we were gonna kind of have some deficiencies and and just kind of a a full analysis of the police department. Um, and as a result of that, um, we did a lot of staffing changes, a readjustment of of, I guess, where we allocated people. Um, and and as a result of that, we do probably monthly analysis that get forwarded to the uh, the mayor's office. But as of Friday, the nineteenth, um, there's been a consistent downward trend in the overtime spending. Um, and we're currently at two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars less this fiscal year than last fiscal year, year-to-date. And that also does not include all the um overtime potential reimbursement for the COVID. Um, grants and FEMA, the CARES Act, that is currently estimated at fifty-one thousand dollars that we, we hope to get reimbursed from. Um, and just to give you an example, in the to, in the month of January. Um, when we fill overtime shifts when people are out. So in twenty twenty, we filled one hundred and eighteen shifts for the whole month of January. In, in this year, in twenty twenty-one, we filled forty-one shifts. So it's just a significant difference with, you know, our staffing levels and and how we kind of allocated people. Um, then some of the highlights for the budget, um, currently right now, year-to-date, we're at um seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars in overtime. And the forecast is about five hundred thousand dollars remaining till the end of fiscal year, uh, with a projection of about one point two million. So that's roughly five to eight percent lower than last year. So we, we've seen a, a very good improvement with, you know, the changes that we made. Um, probably the next biggest thing that we have going on is accreditation. So Lieutenant Delpapa has been working on that since he was uh transitioned into the professional standards and training position. So um, for those of you who don't know, uh, this, the Massachusetts Accreditation Commission is kind of a private entity. That is funded by fees that we pay to be a member of it. Um, the accreditation is, is basically a set of standards and um there's, there's two levels. Um, accreditation is um comprised comprised of three hundred and eighty-two standards. And two hundred and fifty-seven of those are mandatory. And there's a additional one hundred and twenty-five that are optional. Um, so the certification process, which is uh what we're going for in March. Is uh consists of one hundred and fifty-nine standards. And all of those are mandatory. So what happens is you, you meet the one hundred and fifty-nine standards and then that's a huge um. I guess, part of the two hundred and fifty-seven mandatory standards to become fully accredited. Um, so the, the certification assessment is scheduled for March eighteenth and nineteenth. And um after we accomplish that, we apply for the uh accelerated accreditation process. Uh, which just means that they, they speed up the timelines and we've actually have all the standards in place right now. So it's just really, we, we tried scheduling this about four months ago and it's been very delayed because of uh COVID and all the restrictions with that. So. Um, we're really looking forward to that. And just to give you an idea that the standards we're talking about. Are policies and procedures for, say, use of force, uh, vehicle pursuits, arrest procedures. And even like our financial uh processes that we have, if we take in fees and and actually budgeting. So it's pretty comprehensive about all aspects of a police department. Uh, so we're really looking forward to that achievement in, in about a month. Um, and and part of that is kind of timely because of the police reform bill, which we hear a lot about. But the, the things is a lot of unknowns with, with the reform bill at this point. Because they're have to appoint um the governor and and actually the attorney general. And and several committees have to appoint all the commissioners that have yet to be named. Um, and there's a lot of mandates that we're required to start uh fulfilling, starting immediately in January where some. Uh, July, there's a bunch. And then in September, there's a bunch more. Um, and these are gonna take actually a lot of personnel time um to come into compliance with, say, our internal affairs records. That we have to submit to the post-commission. Um, training requirements, um, you know, different policies that we're adjusting now, which is kind of timely with the accreditation process. Um, and for instance, we already, we have to train the whole police department, which we did last week and the second half is this week. On the reform bill itself, because there's new standards in place that are gonna impact everybody in policing and, you know. And certainly all the patrol officers and, and all, all our staff. So uh, that's constantly evolving. And uh, still a lot of unknowns, but it is gonna take a, a significant amount of effort from at least the administration and then probably some people to be assigned. To, you know, fulfill some of these obligations that we're gonna have to fulfill. Um, a, a big, a big project that we have um that um. Has been in the works for quite some time is the records management system that we had to purchase. Um, a records management system is essentially every aspect of the police department from. A dispatch, when you call, it, it tracks all the in-house records, it does all the reports, all the bookings, pretty, pretty much everything we do goes through our records management system. The company that we had was about a thirty-year-old company that was not gonna be supported anymore. Um, so last year, uh, in the capital request, we were approved the new records management system. Um, the first payment was two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, which was paid last year. The new, the second payment in the, is one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, which is part of the capital request this year. Which um. Is right now in the very early stages of um being implemented. We're hoping to go live, I want to say in May. It might get pushed back a little bit, but um, there's a lot of behind the scenes that we're working with, bailed on with like um. Mapping of all the streets and intersections and residents and and all that kind of stuff that that gets inputted during the dispatch process. So. There's a uh, a significant amount of work involved with our whole records management system. We actually have one officer assigned full-time to just working with that company to implement this. And over the next several months, it's gonna take more people. And we have to train the entire department, obviously, on how to use it all. So um. It's a big project and and we're starting to just really get into it right now, but hopefully we're gonna be fully operational with it in July. Um, one of the big things that's happened over the past. One of the big things that's happened over the past year, and I, I can't speak highly enough about Mike McGurty in the facilities department. They have been just incredibly responsive, uh professional, helpful. Um, they have done so much work in our building in the last year and um it's just, it's noticeable every day when we go in there. For instance, they, they completely um dismantled our dispatch center. We had a trailer from the state nine-one-one system come in and we, we removed dispatch um and put it in a, in a mobile command center in the parking lot for two weeks. And um Mike and his team came in and and they, and essentially dismantled everything, replaced all the flooring, dismantled all the uh furniture, like pressure washed it, cleaned it, reassembled it, reinstalled everything with the uh coordination of belt. Just a super deep cleaning and it totally made the place look brand-new. They reinstalled all-new lighting. Um, they've done a tremendous amount of work in our heating system. The COVID remediation for like air purifiers and um the personal protective equipment uh that's applicable to the whole department has been installed with them. They actually renovated our fitness center in the garage, which came out incredibly good. Our evidence room, we had upgraded. They're uh working right now on putting a front door, uh overhang on the front door to stop water leaks, which were coming into the, into the basement and into the evidence room area. They put in a new uh water heating system in the, and um they renovated our family services unit, so we, we didn't have, we had kind of cut some space in half and they, and they created a whole new office area for the family services people. Uh, they've done some major garage door repairs and they're uh currently doing a station-wide LED lighting upgrade replacement. And um actually some, some major plumbing repairs too. So, they've been very busy in our building and I just can't thank them enough and um it, they, they've just been great to work with, so. That's facilities. And then uh the last, the last thing I'll just highlight is um some of the things that have been going on with the, um, in the community for us. Um, obviously, over the last year, we've had some pretty major um incidents that have impacted a lot of people in the community and and um, you know, we work very close with the mayor and and the chief of staff, uh Tom, on addressing a lot of the concerns that, that arise throughout the year with these kind of things. Um, we've had several shootings, unfortunately, you know, tragically, including a murder. Uh, an officer-involved shooting uh the, in that, in the shooting down at the plaza. And also, we had some very large-scale protests that we prepared for and um because of that preparation, I think we prevented uh a big problem down at the plaza with uh, you know, the potential was there and um we had some, some pretty close calls throughout the, that week that uh in July that those protests were happening, uh with people showing up, which actually resulted in the, in a couple of car chases uh out of town as a way, as, as a result of, of our presence down there. So, there was a lot, there was a lot going over the summer for the entire department. You know, and in that regard, we, we meet with the plaza pretty regularly. Obviously, we have people aside down there full-time, but we're in pretty, pretty good constant contact and and um Deputy Cahoon uh is in charge of operations, so he's, he's heavily involved in all this kind of stuff that um any, any of our responses and all our interactions with, obviously, the plaza. But also um uh some hotels that we've um had increased activity with. You know, we're working with them to try and solve some of those problems. And recently, some apartment complexes that we've been dealing with the management company, uh making recommendations and adjustments for them. You know, one of the things that we did down the plaza, just I, I know is um interesting for people and like to know what's happening is you know, with the uptick in, in violence down there, you know, in, in our increased presence, we also coordinated with Boston PD with the, their youth strike force, violent task force um to came, they came down and worked with us for about two weeks um at the plaza and David Busters in that general area. We also had some federal task forces that we have officers assigned to that came down and um and worked with us for a couple of weeks just to, to identify some potential problems and how to mitigate them. So, there's a lot of effort put on that and, you know, a lot of attention put on, on that area. Um, so we're very aware of those, you know, those incidents that we've had and and how we address them. And um, I guess finally, it, it was a little bit discussed uh by Mary Beth. Um, you know, some of the trends that we're seeing with COVID and and um, you know, unfortunately, we, we, we see it all the time, you know, at the police department, but we have seen, you know, an increase in mental health calls um uh is seems like a, a constant problem with uh, you know, drug addiction and um overdose uh calls. Uh, we've seen definitely in the last few months, uh, uh, a, a lot more homeless people um in the popu, the homeless populations, a lot more visible in town. And we've been working with the uh Transit Authority on, on some of those potential remedies um and then domestic violence issues. So, um, you know, we see those trends with the, that um have been brought up nationally, but you know, there is some, there is some issues locally that, that, you know, we notice and we're doing what we can to, to, you know, to mitigate some of that stuff and and address it. I guess that would be it. If uh, if you have any questions, but that's, it's been a very busy year uh to say the least and uh it's, it's um, it, it's a, it's a pleasure to work uh in, in the police department. There's a lot of very professional people there that, that honestly take a lot of pride in what they do and and they sincerely want to do the best they can for the community in the police department and and it shows every day. You know, um, and it's, I'm proud to be a member of the police department and and work with those, you know, those people, so.
Well, thank you so much, Chief, not only for being here tonight, but for all the work that you've done. Uh, as you said, it's no, y- y- you had a lot um on your plate and done so much the past year. I do appreciate all the work all the police officers do on a daily basis to serve and protect the residents of Braintree. I've always said, I don't think you can go around town without seeing one of your cruisers around town. And for me, it's just peace of mind and I, I, I stay the same thing when the police department's before us. I think we can take it for granted because you can go to other communities um when you're on vacation or whatever and you don't see that, you don't see that engagement in the community policing and the police force out and about in the community, the, your sector police officers, the chief, the deputies, everybody out involved in the community. Y- y- you know, a, a dressing and ten, just, just being proactive out there um and being more engaged in the community. I think there's a lot of things that uh you and your officers do that the community doesn't realize to make the community more comfortable with, you know, police officers. Um, but so I thank you for all that and for all the improvements and I was able to see firsthand your family services upgrades that the building department did. Thank you Deputy Chief Cahoon for showing me that. And they did a phenomenal job and I will say, all the upgrades you mentioned are well-needed for the community who doesn't always, doesn't hardly ever, hopefully never have to see the inside of the police department. Uh, it is in need of repairs and upgrades and our men and women on the police department are, they are working twenty-four hours, so that along with the fire department is, uh, does need upgrades. So they are well-needed, money well-spent. I appreciate your fiscal responsibility and the money you've spoken of uh about the savings in this past year, which is no easy task, given uh the task you guys and men and women have to do on a daily basis. Uh, before we take questions, I just wanted to um, where we have Deputy Chief Cahoon here for the first time and you're approaching your one year, if you wanna add anything.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Chief, pretty much hit everything. I'm happy to be here and uh obviously, it's been a whirlwind year for everybody throughout the town with COVID and everything else we've seen um in two thousand twenty, but um pretty much just everything the chief said. We're committed to uh, to having a better year this year. I hope everybody is and and we have the police department to help along that way too, so. Thank you for uh allowing me to be here.
Absolutely. Thanks for being here. Uh, okay, Council Ryan, go ahead. I see your hand raised.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I just wanna thank the chief and the deputy chief for uh coming here tonight and giving uh, giving that great update on what's going on in the police department and uh that's, that was excellent. And if I would hope you could come back and give us an update every once in a while like you just did and that. It's really informative and I think it's nice if uh the folks at home can see and hear uh what's going on as well. So uh, wanted to commend you for a job well-done and even, even the overtime, you know, talk about tackling a tough issue. It's easy to say, you know, to not tackle and then I, I commend you for that too and uh for making those improvements. So thank you very much, Chief. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You, Council Ringus, I saw you, then Council Berica.
Uh, thank you, Chief. Um, piggybacking on what uh Council Ryan just said, um, thank you. Obviously, you uh, you sort of stepped into this role in a time that um we didn't know the world was about to fall from under us. Um, so you've had some, uh, some unique challenges in dealing with COVID and dealing with um the things that go along with that. So I, I'm, I'm thankful for the, the work you've done and working with all the departments um and making the department so visible. Um, and just um, you know, working to show the, the true professionalism of the Braintree Police Department. Um, and that comes from you, that comes from Deputy Chief Cahoon and and Deputy Chief Want. So uh, thank you for the work the three of you doing, that all of the offices are doing. And uh like Council Ryan, I think it would be great to have you back on a, whether it be a quarterly basis, just for updates because I think it's important for the council and it's important for the town as the whole to see and hear what you guys are up to over there. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks.
You, Council Berica, go ahead.
Thank you, President Hume. Um, thank you, Chief Dubois. To echo, I wanted to echo what President Hume's mentioned about some of the, the work your staff is doing that residents may not know about. Um, there is a police officer who is part and a important, huge part of the Braintree Community Partnership on Substance Use Prevention, um, which includes so many things um that we've been working on as, as the members of the partnership. So wanted to make sure folks were aware, everything from recovery coach training to um out, post-overdose outreach and and lots of, you know, probably unsung important work uh that your team is doing. And and thank you for being such an active participant in that process. Um, I did have a question as well on the accreditation, which I know is a massive, massive undertaking and thank you for doing that. I think Braintree can really be proud that we're um out in front there. Is there a spot either on the police website or on the town website where residents could see what those standards are that you talked about and the process that you need to go through?
Um, our policies are on our, our website and they get updated constantly, so those are all available. Almost all, there's a couple that are not, just operational ones that we wouldn't post, but the Mass Accreditation Commission has a website and they would also list it. Yeah, one, you know, one, one of the uh, the wishlist things or the long-term goals is, you know, we, we, we talk about it often, but just time and resources is, is our website. There's a lot we can do with that and um, you know, it's kind of the, the first interaction a lot of people have with, with our agencies, that's where they go. Um, so we've talked about some improvements and how we can modify it and um, that's something that we'd like to get done this year. So, it, so it would be more accessible for people to understand what we're talking about. But there's, there's um, most of the policies are available online.
Thank you. Thank you. Council Flaherty, go ahead.
Thank you, President Hume. Thank you uh Chief Dubois um for this exceptionally helpful rundown of details about what's been going on in the police department in the past year. It can't have been an easy year and I know as a District One counselor, I constantly am fielding uh inquiries about uh the plaza because the plaza is located in District One and abutting residents um are often worried about what might happen next, especially after a year like this one. Um, and I'm grateful to know that there's some regional coordination with um the, the Boston Police Department and so forth uh to, to deal with that. I know that the plaza is an exceptional challenge um in a community and um it's a good, I think it's great to know that you're working with other organizations. And, you know, thank you so much for the fine work that you do. It is uh, I know it makes our community feel so much safer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anybody else? Okay, uh, seeing none. Chief, Deputy Chief, thank you for being with us. Sorry it took us so long, but as other councillors said, yep, we hope to see um and hear from you more often, but keep up the great work. Extend your um, our appreciation and thanks to all your staff. And you're welcome to stay with us tonight, but I know you both have to get up early tomorrow, so you can go about the rest of your business if you like.
As you can see, I went home already. Tim's still, still at work. I don't know what he's doing there, but.
He's on the night shift.
He, he still is, so he's probably wrapping something up, but uh just thank you all and um more than happy to come back um, you know, on either, whenever uh President Hume wants to invite me or some kind of predetermined date, but um, you know, I, I do think updates are important and, and you know, it's helpful for the community to understand w- what we're, what we've been doing and, you know, what resources are available and and um, you know, all that kind of information that we can provide. So, my pleasure to be here. Thank you very much for having me.
Chief, you're always welcome to come in a council meeting. No invitation needed. Okay, thank you both. Uh, moving on to old business, item two zero zero seven one, the town clerk polling locations or take up any action relative there too. This was tabled at our last meeting, so is there a motion to take off of the table order two zero zero seven one? You're muted.
Second. Don't move, Madam President.
Thank you. There's been a motion made by Council Ringus, second, Ringus seconded by Council Ryan to remove, I, or, order table, order two zero zero seven one off the table. Clerk Samino, a roll call vote, please.
Council Berica.
Yes.
Council Connors.
Aye.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume.
Aye.
Council Mackin. Council Mackin.
He's muted. I don't know if he's here.
Council Mackin. I'm assuming it's a yes.
He's not on camera and he's muted too.
Okay. I'll continue. Oh, Ryan.
Aye.
Council Ringus.
Aye.
Council Ryan.
Aye.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
I'm gonna say eight in favor, one present.
Okay, thank you. All right, so thank you all for being patient as we tabled this. We were trying to get all the information because what we are going to do tonight, we do have Jim Casey, clerk of the council, here with us tonight um for a presentation on this. This is going to be, we're going to allow the chat feature for the public during this. We're gonna turn it on when we allow the public to talk. You can also raise your hand for questions and comments, but what I'm gonna do first is Jim Casey's gonna give his presentation. I'm gonna say a few things I was waiting for. Uh, I had requested information from the schools, the police and the Commission on Disab, the ADA coordinator, rather, because they are a huge part of the election process and the polling places. So, uh, we do have with us tonight um Nicole Tava, chief of staff and town solicitor um who put forth all that information for us. So we wanted to have all of our information, that's why these items were tabled in the past. And uh Jim Casey's going to give his presentation, which I just wanna say in advance, what an extensive presentation this was. Jim, I can't thank you enough for your um attention to detail on this, the questions I had going into it. When I read the document, you answered just about all my questions. I hope the um public will get all their questions answered here tonight. If, at the end of this, if the council's not comfortable, we do not have to vote tonight. We do have some time. We'll get into the timeframes later. There's some state issues to take um up with that, but I will, so I'm gonna, again, we're gonna have a presentation with Casey. Council will get to speak, ask their questions, I'll move to the public and we'll come back to the council for your questions, just so everybody's clear. For those of you in attendance, if you can't use the chat feature or talk, you can always text Sue Samino at three three nine nine eight seven two seven two six. You can always follow up with an email to the towncounselors@braintreema.gov. Uh, and I should also say, we have received many emails for and against this. Uh, so to those residents who have already submitted their um opinions, as we sit here representing all of you, I appreciate it and thank you all. So uh Clerk Casey, I will turn it over to you now. Thank you for being with us and for your patience.
Well, thank you and good evening all. Um, if you just bear with me for one moment, um Sue Samino and I will try to have uh, get me to share this little screen. And what I'll do is put on the presentation so I'll can follow along. One thing I just wanna point out is this presentation tonight that I'll be giving is a streamlined version of the handout and the presentation that is available online for residents to see. Um, if I did the handout one, we might be here till midnight and I'm hoping to get this one done in less than twenty minutes. Okay, so, so um.
And is this available online, by the way?
Yes, it is.
Great. Can you just tell everybody where they can get it?
Okay, if you, main website, departments, Town Clerk, voter information, once you get to the voter information, um, page, look to the right column and you'll see a link to the presentation. Okay, uh, Sue, what do I need to do here?
Jim, you are a co-host, so you go down and you click the share screen, green button.
Okay.
You should find your minimized document.
There it is. It's a mini one. Okay, let me start this thing up. Slideshow. Um, beginning. Yeah, let me get rid of that one thing. Okay, again, good evening. Today's online presentation has been streamlined to address issues raised back in July when approval of the voting center was made on a temporary basis. The handout provided to council members last week and available online provides greater detail on the highlights to be presented this evening. To manage this presentation to a reasonable time period, I asked that all questions be held until after the presentation. In addition, when we do get to the question part of it, I ask that they be asked through the council president. Okay. Council on a twenty oh forty-two established voting centers through the end of twenty twenty. Chapter one fifteen of the Acts of twenty twenty enabled municipalities to address public health concern resulting from the pandemic. New legislation has extended, uh, the Acts of twenty twenty through, uh, June thirtieth to twenty twenty-one. There is pending legislation to make early voting in person and by mail permanent and add same-day voter registration. During the approval process of Order twenty oh forty-two, several concerns were raised by the council members as well as the general public regarding the ability to maintain a healthy environment during the COVID pandemic for both the voters and election workers. Voter lines, voter access, sufficient parking, neighborhood polling locations, and transportation to polls. The primary objective of this report is to determine the future direction of election polling locations within the town. What are some of the reasons to consider consolidation? Role of the election officials. The election cycle. Voters' options to cast ballots. Declining election day voting. Comparison with other municipalities. Health, healthy environment. Voter access. Election costs as well as recommendations. What is the role of the election official? The election process is built upon a framework of many Massachusetts general laws is, and is under the supervision of the Secretary of State. With the election process managed by the chief election official of the municipality. The designation of polling location is defined under Mass General Laws, Chapter fifty-four, Section twenty-four. It is determined by the Town Council. The responsibility of determining how a voter chooses to transport themselves to the polls or how a voter chooses to cast a ballot is left up to the voter. The election cycle. The election cycle runs over a four-year period in, on average, two elections are held each year. Elections are held, state elections are held on even number months, and local elections are held on odd number months. State elections generally have two election schedules each year. A preliminary election held in September, which I just got notice may be changed to the third week in August for the future. A general election held in November. And a third election, the presidential primary election, which is held in March every fourth year. Local elections generally have one election scheduled each year. A general election in November. A preliminary election may be required every fourth year, and it's based on, uh, the number of qualified mayoral candidates, which is held in September. During twenty twenty, voters had more option to ca-, to cast their ballots than they had ever been before. They can cast a ballot on election day, by absentee ballot, early voting ballots, persons with disabilities, voting military and overseas U.S. citizens, and confidential voters. Why would we consider consolidating polling locations? The introduction of in-person early voting in two thousand sixteen has provided a convenient voting option to cast ballots early to avoid void lines at polling locations. In two thousand and sixteen, election day turnout declined by thirty percent from twenty twelve. And the twenty twelve election was a presidential primary, a presidential election. In the twenty sixteen was a presidential election. In twenty twenty, the decline in that election day turnout was accelerated by the introduction of early voting by mail. So, uh, election day voting fell to sixty-one percent from, um, twenty twelve. A sample of ten municipalities of approximate population size to Braintree all to various degrees have consolidated their voting precincts into multiple polling locations. And as you can see here, Braintree at twelve twelve, um, we could take a look at the square miles of a community. We see Alabot and, um, Belrika basically twice the size of Braintree, and they have half the polling locations that Braintree has. Three municipalities, Franklin, Marshville, and Reading, have a single voting center for voters to cast their ballots. Concerns were raised that the consolidation of polling locations would place voters and election workers at greater risk of exposure to COVID. The con-, the consolidation of polling locations allowed for greater administrative control over health guidelines. Over forty thousand ballots were cast. Um, in two-thirds were cast in, um, on election day or in person for the fall election season. During the three elections held this past fall, the Braintree Health Department reported three hundred and sixty COVID cases. That was discussed, uh, this evening, the number of cases we've had here in Braintree. The most amazing thing is zero cases were traced to election activities, which is a testament to all of the work that the, um, election workers has done and the support we had with the Health Department in managing this, um, challenge we had before us. Concerns were raised that the consolidation of polling locations would infringe on the rights of voters with disabilities. Screw this up here. Yes, I did. I missed a slide here. Concerns were raised that the consolidation of polling locations would create longer lines at voting centers and take longer for voters to cast their ballots. Nearly twenty-seven thousand voters cast their ballot at one of the three voting centers. Long lines were eliminated by marked voting lanes combined with coordinated signage. State-approved technology to expedite voter check-in. Technology to flag voters that received and voted early. And technology to scan absentee and early-voted ballots at their polling locations. Questions were raised that the consolidation of polling locations would infringe on the rights of voters with disabilities. Polling locations are required to be ADA accessible with a primary entry, entry point. However, a secondary ADA entry point is allowed in. Currently, three of our twelve individual polling locations have a secondary ADA entry point. All voting centers have just one voting, uh, point. For state and local elections, voters with disabilities were provided with more options to cast their ballot than they had ever been before. Concerns were raised, um, that the consolidation of polling locations would limit voting access in, with the loss of neighborhood polling locations. Most of the existing polling locations have limited access within the neighborhood. Two polling locations are located in buildings not under the control of the town. That is St. Thomas More and the Braintree Yard Club. Six elementary schools are used as polling locations. Neighborhood polling locations are necessary to, to, uh, and, um, let me see here, where did I go wrong? This is an option, individual placement to, to eliminated parking spaces. Help me out with me one more time. Okay, concerns were, um, I skipped another slide. I apologize. There's just so many slides here. Again, concerns were raised relative to the loss of the neighborhood, uh, polling locations. And like I said, most of the polling locations have limited access within the neighborhood. And two of the polling locations, St. Thomas More and Braintree Yard Club, are not under the control of the town. Six elementary schools are used as primary locations. And parents have expressed concerns in the past over the safety with their use. Neighborhood polling locations were necessary due to, uh, limited, uh, car ownership in the past. In two thousand and twenty-one, on average, each Braintree household has two registered vehicles. Concerns were raised that the consolidation of polling location would negatively impact a voter's ability to take the bus to voting, to vote given announced service cuts. Polling locations are primarily selected based on available space of adequate, adequate size to accommodate voting. A town hall building, adequate parking, and meeting guidelines on accessibility rather than along bus routes. Currently, there are five bus routes that service Braintree residents. Bus service tends to operate along a primary roadway within the community. And it designed as feeder routes to the subway are rail stations. The ride is a paratransit service that provides door-to-door shared ride transportation using accessible vehicles to eligible people who cannot use fixed-room transportation. And the ride is operated in compliance with the Federal Americans with Disability Act. Here, the following three charts are designed to provide a visual overview of each of the polling locations within their respective districts and proposed voting centers. Except for District two B, which is St. Thomas More, and District five A here at Braintree Town Hall. You may note that the proximity of polling locations are within a reasonable distance to their provo-, uh, proposed voting se-, uh, center. District one A, the Marge Christian Center on Palm Street. District one B, the Flaherty Elementary School. District two A, the Hollis Elementary School. District two B, St. Thomas More Church. And the proposed, uh, voting center is here at Braintree Town, um, High School. For District three and four, Ross Elementary School, the Braintree Yard Club, East Middle School and the Morrison School, with East Middle School being selected as the voting center. And for District five and six, we have Braintree Town Hall serving as five A, Liberty School for five B, South Middle School for six A, and the Highlands Elementary School for six P, with the polling, uh, voting center here at, uh, South Middle School. The next three charts provide an overview of the pros and cons for each of the polling locations within their respective council districts and proposed voting centers. For each individual polling location, there are more cons than pros, while the opposite is for the voting centers. The key difference in greater administrative oversight to manage the wide range of voting options and cost savings are for the voting centers. So we take a look at, uh, District one and two. We look at the, uh, pros. We see it, uh, neighborhood. Though there is limited access in three of the four neighborhood locations, and parking, uh, seems to be sufficient, other than in the, at the Flaherty School. On our negatives, we see, um, bus service, um, separate ADA entrances, deep stairwells, active buildings, and standalone election support along with school security and the school's security being within the elementary school, uh, buildings. At the proposed high school location, we see that the pros are spacious voting center, parking, worker support, pre- and post setup and breakdown, election day access to locations. It's less costly. But we do see some concerns about the, um, limited neighborhood access and, uh, parking. Or bus service, I should say. But District three and four, again, for the cons, we see, um, limited, um, voting in the neighborhoods. And what we see is, um, fairly good parking in the, um, individual polling locations. Our negatives tend to be school security, bus service, standalone election support, and, in some instances, uh, limited parking and ADA parking, which is at the Braintree Yard Club. For our East Middle School Voting Center, again, it's consistent with what we saw in Braintree High School, of spacious voting areas, parking ADA, and we have supplemental parking in each election work across support. Our pre-, pre- and post-election setup and breakdown, election day access. Again, it's less costly. Again, like with all of them, uh, poor bus service, and, uh, we're not in the neighborhoods. For five and six, again, we see parking in, um, limited to good neighborhood access, uh, good, uh, good benefit here. For five A, we're at Braintree Town Hall, and that's where the Town Clerk's office is located. Again, our negatives are bus service, active buildings, neighborhood standalone election support with the similar, um, positives and negatives for District five and six. The total November second, twenty twenty-one estimated local election cost for individual, individual polling locations amounts to ninety-eight thousand dollars versus eighty-four thousand dollars for the voting centers. A difference of fourteen thousand dollars. In addition, a one-time cost of twelve thousand dollars will be needed for the individual polling locations to address some secure Wi-Fi issues. Um, that would be required if we continue with the polling location. And as you can see, for voting centers, um, there's no dollars required because, um, this past election season, I was able to secure a grant to fund the purchase of these Wi-Fi, um, units, so we won't have to pick that up. So there's an extra twelve thousand dollars in additional cost. In total, that is twenty-six thousand dollars in additional cost by staying with the polling location versus the voting center. I just want to point out one thing here is, uh, this twenty-six thousand dollars, nine thousand of that dollars is associated with police department overtime. They provide, provide the details. Essentially, what we're gonna be doing is individual polling locations would require twelve double shifts of, um, detail to man the polls, while it only requires three double shifts for the voting centers. There are four possible consolidation options. We can go back to the individual polling locations. We could consider district voting precincts. We could continue with the district voting centers, which was very successful this past election season. Or we could look at voting at one central voting center, which would be Braintree High School. Council, uh, President Hume's already stated today, uh, today that she had requested, requested comments from various departments that support elections. That was the school's police and the town's ADA coordinator on the provoke, proposed consolidation of the, uh, polling location plan, moving from twelve individual locations to the revoting center. Doctor, uh, the superintendent of school, Dr. Hackett, states with a reduction in the number of polling locations to include the school sites listed.
Jim?
Yes?
But I'm going to interrupt you because I'm going to read this whole letter for the people in attendance. So you can skip this part in your presentation.
Okay.
I didn't know that was, I didn't have that on.
Well, as I said, there were some little updates in the presentation.
Okay, okay.
Okay. So, as chief election official of the town for the past seven years, I have managed sixteen elections over this time period. Thirteen of the elections were via the individual polling locations, with the last three via the three voting centers. These past three elections were held under the most extreme condition and presented new election day challenges due to the COVID pandemic. In years past, election day was a one-day event. Show up on that given Tuesday, identify yourself, cast your ballot, and on your way. These past three election, election day was a twenty-eight day event with the addition of early voting by mail and early voting in person mandated by COVID legislation. The voter had many voting choices to cast their ballots than ever before and far too many times applied for an early vote ballot by mail and then decided to actually use, uh, vote using one of the other available methods. For the election official, tracking what each voter was doing with their ballot became quite the challenge. With the use of newly approved election technology in the consolidating of polling locations to provide greater administrative oversight at the post, this challenge could easily have been a disaster than a successful venture. I respectfully request the support of the permanent adoption of the three district voting centers for the following reason. Success of the district voting centers during the fall elections, declining voter day turnout, elimination of elementary school use, stronger administrative oversight, lower election cost, a positive voter experience. And the recommendations of the school superintendent, police chief, and our ADA coordinator. I want to thank you for your time, and at this time, I'll turn the meeting over to Council President Hume, who will accept any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Clerk Casey, for that presentation. Um, as I stated earlier, I had asked for some information from superintendent of schools, Dr. Frank Hackett, who is with us here tonight, from Police Chief Mark Dubois, who was here earlier, and from Christina Zenity, who is our ADA coordinator, who is also here with us tonight. I just asked for them for their opinion from their department's perspective, what the consolidation of the polls last year meant to them, uh, what was good, what was bad, any obstacles, anything like that. So I am going to read to you the full memo that was sent to myself. So Semino, Clerk of the Council, Jim Casey, Town Clerk from Nicole Taub, Chief of Staff and Director of Operations. Um, it was dated February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and it was regarding our discussion here tonight. President Hume, Clerk Semino, and Clerk Casey, as requested, the following information is being provided in relation to the town clerk's request to reduce the number of polling locations from eleven to three. The reduction was implemented for the two thousand and twenty election due to COVID, and the pending request would make the change permanent and applicable to all elections moving forward. From the Braintree Public Schools Superintendent Frank Hackett, stated the school district recognizes and appreciates the role that all schools have played in the election process over the years, and those comments are only intended to address for the logistical challenges the district faces to ensure the safety of the students and not to weigh in on the question for the council is considering. Thanks in part to the advanced communication and planning done by the town clerk and our principals, we have not had any significant problems over the years hosting elections. However, several of our schools are not ideal locations for the volume of traffic we experience during voting. For example, Morrison has only one road in and out of, to the building with very limited parking. In the past, we've had a couple of minor accidents due to the limited parking and made the adjustment about five years ago to not hold school on election days in which high voter turnout was expected. While manageable, it does have an impact on the overall school year calendar. With that, a reduction in the number of polling locations to include the school sites listed in the clerk's proposal would be more convenient and, in my opinion, safer for voters and our students. From the Braintree Police Department, from Chief Mark Dubois stated, the police, the police department staff polling locations for town and state elections with one officer at each polling location on a day shift and an evening shift for a total of two officers from six-thirty AM to the close of polls. The total number of officers for the eleven locations was thirty-three. Additionally, an officer is assigned to the central tabulation room in Johnson Chambers. Finally, an officer was previously assigned to escort the town clerk to all polling locations on election day. For the November third, two thousand and twenty election, staffing at each location was significantly greater than during a traditional election due to a potential for civil unrest. With three officers at each location, including in the parking lots, additionally, the department staffed two rapid response units with two officers per vehicle and an officer in charge for each shift, bringing the total number of officers required on election day to twenty-eight. The total overtime incurred on November third, two thousand and twenty was ten thousand, two hundred, nine dollars. The cost would cover, the cost was covered by the department from the existing overtime budget. Going forward, we expect to return to staffing levels of one officer per shift per location with an additional officer at the central tabulation room. A reduction of three polling locations would require less police personnel on election day, resulting in a reduction in cost to the department and would have less of an impact on the daily schedule and employment of resources. From our ADA coordinator, Christina Zenity, uh, polling place accessibility for elderly and handicapped voters is governed by nine, nine fifty, CMR fifty-one, which implements the federal voting accessibility for the Elderly and Handicapped Act and applies to all Massachusetts elections. The purpose of the regulation is to promote the fundamental right to vote by improving access for handicapped and elderly individuals to polling places and the voting process. Requirements of the regulations include, among other things, site access, parking, at least one accessible entrance, ramps, and at least one accessible voting unit. A review of the polling locations at East and South Middle Schools and Braintree High School suggests that all three locations meet the requirements of the regulations. One issue that was not raised during the last election was public transportation to these locations. However, that is not required by the regulation. And in addition to this, Clerk, Clerk Casey mentioned some of the public grassroots on that. So I thank you all for the input. Thank you, Clerk Casey. With that, I'm going to open it up to the council for questions, and then we'll go into the public. And Sue, if we can open up the chat, I see your hand up, Chief of Staff Taub. So go ahead. Sue, if you can open up that chat in the meantime for residents to pose their questions.
Madam President, thank you. In addition to ADA Coordinator Christina Zenity, we also have with us this evening Lynn Valencourt, who is the Chair of the Commission on Disabilities. So I did just want to recognize her and thank her for being with us this evening on behalf of the commission. So thank you.
Thank you for that. One other person, not necessarily for this item, but for almost all the item agendas tonight is Ed Spelman, our Director of Municipal Finances. So thank you, Ed, for being here. I, now I'll open it up to the counselors. Anybody have a question on this? Seeing that, I'm going to open it up to the public for their questions. Raise your hand up. Counselor Sasha, go ahead, and then I'm going to go to the public. Go ahead.
Um, thank you, Madam President. Are we, um, are we going to take it back to council questions after the public speaks?
Yeah, if you have a question now, I'll take your questions now. I'm going to go to the public, and then I'm going to come back to the council again for follow-up.
Um, I think I'll hold off then, let the public speak, and then I'll, thank you.
That's fine. Yep. Counsel Flaherty, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, my question has to do with, um, when will we expect firm decisions to be made at the state level to determine whether early voting and mail-in voting will continue as options for residents?
Clerk Casey, do you have an answer to that?
Yes, um, just at the close of business today, I got three legislative acts, one by the Secretary of State's Office, one proposed by the Mass Town Clerks Association, and another one by a voter advocacy group on some of the proposed changes for future elections. They all include, um, seven days of early voting for primary elections, fourteen days of early voting for general elections. They all include, um, vote by mail, and all three presentations, all three legislative acts. Um, we are going to have, um, voter registration to include election day, which normally it ended twenty days before the election. So these legislative acts, if approved, uh, would place a lot of challenges on the election officials, on managing the election, especially on the, um, early voting, uh, registration on election day here. Essentially, a person could show up and claim they are someone, provide a, a piece of paper that states they live at a particular address. So, um, at this point in time, we have no timeframe on it, but I'm going to give you the practice of the state legislators. The COVID event last year, we know we had an election on September. They decided on July thirty-first to implement all of these changes. We had, the town clerks had to implement that in less than two weeks. Um, I would tend to think this is a similar thing. I, let me tell you, it was very stressful for the month of August with what was going on. I prefer to have this decision made irregardless of what the state legislators are going to be doing. I do, uh, most of the town clerks across the state believe that all of these things are going to be in place. So whether they vote them today or vote them at the end of July, um, they're going to happen, and we have to react, and we need to react now, uh, to get it moving.
Um, I just want to, Counsel Flaherty, you all set? Do you have additional questions at this point?
For now, yeah.
Okay. Uh, Clerk Casey, so with the legislature, we, like, for, we don't, it's my understanding, we do not need to vote tonight if it's the will of the council and we want more information and wait to see what the state does, uh, that we would need, uh, at the latest, a vote by May. Is that correct?
I, um, there's no need to do a vote tonight if people feel uncomfortable. Um, but, um, with, if the vote is to go with the voter centers, we have to do a whole petition to include two precincts that are outside of their adjacent precincts. So that would time to work with Representative Hughes' act to get that into play. So we, we need to get that moving and done by, um, July timeframe. So April and May timeframe for a vote would, uh, would essentially be what I need to make it happen. If it doesn't happen, we're going to have to revert back to individual polling location. That is going to require votes within itself. We have to move, um, Counsel Sachi's District two, uh, B site back to St. Thomas Moore. We have to move, um, the Eldraff Fair's site back to its home site, which is, uh, East Middle School. And then we're going to move back the Town Hall, Crispin Center back to District one A. So, uh, some sort of vote needs to be taken, and like I said, May would be a perfect timeframe of the latest possible timeframe to do it.
All right. Fair enough. Anybody else from the council at this time? Again, I'm going to come back to all of us. Seeing that, I'm going over to the public, and Andrew Kay. Go ahead.
Hi, folks. Um, you know, I just want to make a very quick comment first. Um, I did vote in person, uh, in November. I found, um, the process to be very quick, very safe. I think it was incredibly well done. Um, I just have two points that I want to make. I think the first one, I will just make very quickly, um, because I think it's been alluded to, is that we'd certainly love to understand if in, um, if vote by mail is going to be continued. I think it would be reasonable to say if it was not continued, that in-person voting on the day of the election could probably come close to double what it was this past year, and we may have a very different situation. Um, the other piece that I want to touch on and that I was really hoping to see tonight in the presentation is how, um, individual groups were impacted by the change. And I had sent a, a letter, an email to the town counselor and Clerk Casey, um, as well in November. And I, I think the presentation I saw tonight looked very, very similar to the presentation that we saw to kind of go to three, um, for this past election. We have mounds of data available to us now on voter turnout. And that can be examined to see how different groups may have been impacted differently from this. So, you know, we've talked about things that were done to make voting available to seniors or to people with disabilities or people that live in apartment complexes. And we, we've talked about what those steps were, but we have all of the data from this past election to say what was the impact of those groups. Did seniors turn out in higher or lower rates than we've seen in the past? What about people with disabilities? I'm not sure as a group how easy it would be to identify those individuals. But you could certainly do seniors, you could do people in apartment buildings. Um, you know, for myself, I live, um, in District six, I always voted south, I continue to vote it south. But, you know, maybe was there someone in District five who all of a sudden their polling place was further away? Did the voter turnout turn out differently there? And, and I think it's, it's really important to look at that data and to say, how were different groups impacted? Voting is the core fundamental right that we have as citizens in this country. And I think it's really important to say, not only these are steps that we've taken to ensure people can vote, but have those steps been effective? And I think we really need to look at that data before any decision is made. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Humes, may I respond?
You may, Clerk Casey.
Yes, um, I came from a background with consumer behavioral data and statistical data on the consumer company. So I'm very adverse on looking at this type of data to do the analysis base, especially when we're looking at different segments of the population. Um, saying that, in order to accomplish what you're suggesting is a, um, major task undertaking. Uh, all of this data needs to be collected together. Um, right now, our database on election individual does not include whether you are in a, an apartment complex or not. We would have to code that individual data. But it's not just for coding it for this particular, uh, election season. We would have to go back a number of years to build the trend data to see what the differences are. And again, that is a lot of resources. We have a four-member staff, which we are into other options of our jobs that there isn't time or the financial resources to make that happen. And that's one of the reasons why we don't have the data. Um, you'll, you'll hear it on TV, it's because they do have the resources to do that. But at the local level, it's not going to happen unless somebody wants to pony up quite a bit of money in the resources to do it.
Well, I, I guess what I would like to say is I actively work with consumer data. Um, I have, uh, done some work during the, um, the school campaign, looking at some of voted data from past elections. Um, I, I think that some of these things could be pulled together with relative ease, and I would, um, be happy to have a discussion with you outside the meeting and volunteer some of my time to try to pull something together to begin to answer some of these questions, because I, I think we could get at some of these things relatively easily. Um, it would be maybe a little bit imperfect, but at least we would have some data to suggest what the impact was for these groups. We certainly could do it very easily by age, and at least some of the, the larger apartment, um, complexes, we could do some of those things by address to better understand the impact.
Thank you, Mr. Kay.
I'd be more than happy to take you up on that. Um, give me a call tomorrow, uh, and we can discuss some of the requirements involved.
You got it.
Anybody else from the public wish to speak? I do not see any hand raised. Okay, back to the council. Anybody else from the council wish to speak on this? Any follow-up questions? Counsel Sasha, you want to go ahead?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Uh, so I, I do have a couple of concerns. Um, and also, I would like to thank Mr. Kay. I think that's a great idea. Um, and, uh, I, I, I would be happy to help out with the data analysis. That's my, my, uh, area as well. So if you need an extra hand, just let me know. My concerns are, are one, in the broadest context, making a permanent change to polling locations in the middle of a pandemic, seems like not the right time. We are relying on some data about what people did during the pandemic. There are still unknowns, as some, as some counselors pointed out, about, uh, what will be allowed uh, in the Commonwealth going forward. But I also, um, wanted to raise a, a couple of questions about, um, we have, we have. we have, we have outlined three possibilities, the single voter location, or four possibilities. Single voter location, three, six, and keeping it with 11 or 12. We have really not given any time to the concept of six locations. We keep talking about keeping it at 11 or going to three. But I think, you know, from what I've heard from residents, what they really value is not necessarily all 11, but one per district. And as I look through the chart that you provided, Clerk Casey, of the other towns, I would note that three of the towns have gone to a single polling locations, but of the other seven, all seem to have one per district. I don't, maybe with the exception of Chelmsford, but I don't see any others that have gone down to the, something like three for the whole town. And then the last thing I would say is, I, I hope that the, the council can address an issue that has been a concern, and that is about the handicapped residents getting to the polls. And I, I know that it is an incredibly difficult thing, and that Braintree will meet all of the minimum requirements for polling location accessibility. But one of the things that residents have asked is, can we do more than that? And I know Counselor Flaherty has looked into using senior center transportation to help get people to the polls. I don't think we've fully explored any of those options. And it, it, the answer to that could be, there is nothing we can do. But to Mr. Kay's point, we don't know the full impact that this has had. And I think we should at least explore what, what some of those options could be, especially given that there are cost savings potentially that would come out of this and could be put towards any effort to help get people to the polls. So I would hope that we could at least look into that and see what options might be available before any decisions are made. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sasha. So we do, as I stated, we have Lynn Ballen Court and Christine Zinnity here with us tonight. I don't know if either one of you want to speak on that to address Counselor Sasha's concerns?
My name's Lynn Ballen Court. I'm presently the acting chairperson for the Commission on Disabilities. And I recognize that there are concerns about transportation for people and getting them to the polls. I do believe that Jim also mentioned that legally we do not have to, but yes, we want to try to provide as much as we can for our citizens. I think we do have to have a cautionary tale, though, that if we're not, if we are describing people who are, might be physically handicapped, that that opens up sort of a, I don't want to necessarily say a slippery slope, but it does certainly open up to other disadvantaged groups that may become by allowing one particular group. Then what about the people who simply don't have car transportation? Or what about people who can't get there because of other reasons other than a disability that might be listed as a handicap? So I do think that we do have to be cautionary in how we take a look at these and recognize that we may have predetermined groups that we're trying to assist, but in doing so, that we may be opening up, on, opening up a slippery slope, that if we allow for one disadvantaged group, we then must allow it for all of the disadvantaged groups that are within the town, and that may not be financially feasible. So while I support that we need to do all we can for our residents in trying to make sure that we allow full accessibility, I do think that we have to be cautionary when we talk about actually getting people physically transporting them to the polls.
Thank you.
Hi, it's Christine Zinnity. I, I agree with what Lynn said as well. We wouldn't want to not include any, anyone, you know, regardless of their handicap, or if they didn't have their own transportation. And then thinking about, you know, logisticals such as insurance purposes and liability and things like that. So it's definitely a layered thing to look at, making sure everybody does have the same ability to get to these locations to vote is something that, you know, we have talked about. But it's such a, a, a new thing to think about. So, you know, I agree with Lynn. I agree with everything that everyone is saying. We need to think about it and figure something out for, for all residents.
Thank you both. Counselor Sasha, any follow-up on that?
No, thank you, Madam President. Other than just to say thank you both, I think, you know, I think that's, that's exactly what I would ask for, is that, to your point, if we could, if we could dig into that a little deeper and see what the options are, and, and see what we can figure out. I think that would be great. Thank you.
Perfect. Okay. I am going to jump back to the attendees, and I'll get back to the council, because I see Robert Kearns, you have your hand raised. Go ahead, Robert. Just, you're unmuted. Go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi, yep, welcome.
Hi, thank you all. I would say that I wouldn't be surprised if some people go back and vote in person after the pandemic. I've voted in person and absentee by mail before the pandemic and during the pandemic, but I prefer going in person. So I think that people are going to end up going back because they want to go back to normal, go back to doing things like they did before the pandemic. So I think that the polling of in-person may go up, even if there are options for voting by mail. So just maybe keep that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, back to the council. Anybody else wish to speak on this? Counselor O'Brien, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to kind of bounce around here. First, as it pertains to the transportation issue, I believe if we can get as many people to the polls as possible, I think that should be our goal, not to differentiate, not to discriminate. I know discrimination can get us in trouble, and I think that was the implication of the previous speakers. But there is a legislator over in Quincy that provides and announces that he will take people to the polls. Don't know how he does it, but there is history out there that can basically give us input as to how many people might sign up for that. And yes, if they're handicapped, we would have to provide accessible handicap transportation. But I think it's something that could possibly be looked at. We do have vehicles over at the the elderly center, which I keep forgetting the name of it, but I'll move on. So I think it's something to consider. And of course, there'll be a heightened increase, like, attention initially, that over time may wait. Recognizing it's not something legislative, legislatively, we have to provide. I believe that the previous speaker had an idea that should be further reviewed. As to the presentation, I want to thank the speaker, because the presentation is a tremendous presentation. And much like the president had said, the presentation answered many questions that may have arisen. I would like the public a little more time to gain access to it and review it. A previous speaker mentioned that it was similar to one that was put up, put forth before, but this is very comprehensive. So I'm hoping that we don't vote on this tonight. I would vote against voting on this tonight, just to give the public an opportunity to do, to perform further review. But Mr. Casey, tremendous job. As to the presentation, just a slight discrepancy, in my opinion. Two of the voting centers, which include the middle schools, do not list as a con, school security. But I would argue, moving fifth graders up to a middle school now would make, at least me as a, as a parent, although I don't have a fifth grade child, but as a parent of a fifth grader, that would make me a little, give me a little pause. Even the high school, perhaps, in this day and age. But I think school security should be listed as a con under at least those two voting centers. And of course, the high school is up for debate. And finally, I have to say, I don't have a scientific poll from my patch, but my district is one of the has, has a, a high amount of less, less able people, maybe financially as well as in other ways. But I have to say that the input from my district alone is against consolidation, period, stop, no more. So I would have to really consider whether or not I would be voting for any consolidation. I personally feel like a small consolidation to a district level wouldn't be a bad thing for the square miles. And I appreciate seeing the information from the other towns. But the input from my, from both of my precincts are against consolidation. And lastly, I just want to thank the previous speaker who offered his time. That is one of the Bennys of, living in Braintree. People like him get on, let that speaker get on. They, they actually talk the talk, but then they walk the walk by offering their services. So great job, Andy, and I appreciate the offer. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Brien. And I, I do see some hand raised. I just want to ask Chief of Staff Tobb, to your point, Counselor O'Brien, about the rides to the polls and the town providing the rides. I know this has come up in the past, and if I'm not mistaken, there's a liability issue where I'm going to refer to you, Chief of Staff Tobb, to answer that, if you will, or address it, rather.
Certainly. So, you know, generally, on that point, there are, there are two kind of higher-level concerns that come to mind immediately. The one is what was addressed by Ms. Ballen Court and Ms. Zinnity about equitable access. And if you're going to open up transportation, how are you going to define somebody's inability to get to the poll? And where, where is that line drawn without, quite frankly, creating additional liability in the form of somebody who can't get to the poll for some reason that is not physical in nature, but they perhaps wouldn't be eligible for transportation under the theory, which is intended, as has been mentioned by several people, to ensure access for all, right, to the polls? The second piece is the liability incurred in the sheer transportation of an individual in a town vehicle from one location to another, and what coverage we would have in that scenario if there was a worst-case scenario, some type of accident or some type of injury that were to occur, and the additional exposure generated by having somebody in the vehicle. You know, I would suggest, and we've looked at other communities, and we've talked about what other communities do. And what I've seen a lot of is that transportation to the polls is not provided by the local administration or local government, but instead, it's provided by candidates that are running for office in the election that people are seeking transportation to or that are seeking to visit the polls to. And that is an area that, you know, does not create the exposure for the town because it's not the town sponsoring or offering transportation to these individuals. So, you know, I agree with the sentiments of the prior speakers that the priority really should be ensuring access for everyone to the polls who wants to vote, and whether that's voting in person, voting early, voting by mail, and whatever the options that exist a year from now, two years from now, three years from now. That has to be, that has to be the priority, and that has to be the key. But I do think that has to be weighed against the, the resources and, and the other kind of pros and cons that were raised, both through the presentation and in the information that was provided by the departments as requested, and working to find creative solutions that help make sure that everybody that wants to vote in person has the opportunity, regardless of what opportunity, what other options exist in the future in order to do so. But, you know, the liability is significant, and that's something that can't go unnoticed when we're talking about transporting individuals through a town vehicle or a town resource.
Thank you. Okay, I see three counselors with their hands raised. I'll let you go unless you want to defer to the public. Somebody from the public has the hand raised. You all okay with that? None? Yep, okay. All right, Bruce Parks, you are up. I'm going to allow you to speak. Go ahead.
Hi, yes, I was just curious. Early voting, is that still potentially an issue? Or is that still what the state legislature is looking into in addition to the early voting? Oh, sorry, the, the mail-in voting. I know that I did the early voting. It was super convenient. Not everybody can vote on a Tuesday, so being able to vote early, I think opened up another possibility that I think helps everybody across the board, including the transportation issues that some people are bringing up. You know, because it might be easier to find somebody to drive you on a early voting day than a specific day. So that, that's one question. I just was wondering if we have any numbers to see how many did early voting versus the impact of, you know, on a typical Tuesday? Then the, the other thing, transportation. I, I, I guess, I don't want to sound insensitive to this, but I'm just curious as to, wouldn't we have that transportation issue today? Those people that can't get to a poll, that would have that issue whether we have six or another. So I'm just wondering, are we really trying to solve, you know, a hypothetical problem that really doesn't exist? And corollary to that, you know, I, I think we have various groups and organizations that volunteer to, you know, if you need a ride to the polls, contact us. So it doesn't necessarily have to be town-sponsored, but I think there's enough civic groups that have, that I've seen over the years that step up and generally volunteer to do that. So those are just my points. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll just touch on some of those. The number of the voting numbers that you talked about are in Clerk Casey's report, what can be found online. As far as mail-in voting and early voting, that is an act of the state legislature. We don't have that authority. So whatever the state decides will obviously, in every other community, follow suit on that. And the transportation issue, I think from what I've heard, anybody, and I have not heard a lot of people with transportation issues. When there were 12 polling places, it was in the neighborhoods. You could walk, it was easily accessible for anything like that. Moving to the three, some people were going across town, whether they were voting at the high school or south or east, wherever it was. But I think with the early voting and the mail-in voting, if transportation issue, you, there's every opportunity for people to vote. And I know that was one of my concerns last year, that we want to give every individual who wants to vote the ability to vote and not, you know, hinder that right in any way. So thank you for all your points. We will be waiting for what the state legislature says. And as I stated early on in this meeting, we may table this at the end of the night again, if it's the will of the committee to see what the state legislature, because that's a, a big part of the decision that lies here before us. And with that, I will go back to the council. And Counsel America, you are next. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, President Hume. And, and kudos, Clerk Casey. The work you and your team have done has been extraordinary all the way around. So thank you for all of that. My understanding, and I, I know we cannot wait indefinitely to take this vote, I believe there is another bill before the State House that would extend mail-in voting through the end of this year. Because if, in my opinion, I would argue that assuring our residents that, that mail-in voting is an option, is it's worth the wait right now. You know, without, mail-in voting truly makes voting accessible to everybody. And while all of the cost savings and the staff efficiencies are incredibly meaningful, I think more important, in my opinion, is that voting rights and voting access, we can't be determined by what's convenient for us. It has to be, it's fundamental to our democracy, and we must be assured that all of our residents have easy access to a polling location. Walkability was one of the primary reasons Braintree established so many polling locations. And without the guarantee of mail-in voting, my concern is that our most vulnerable residents, especially those who don't drive, are the ones who will be disproportionately impacted by this change. So I, I wanted to put that out there. I know there's several bills before the state legislature, and I would like to see those come to fruition before we make a decision. Thank you, President Hume.
Thank you. Counselor Connors, go ahead. You're next.
Thank you, Madam President. So I just, I want to reiterate as well, great presentation, Mr. Casey. I worked with you guys in the past three elections using the new centers, and I, I thought it was, you guys did a phenomenal job at making it work and making corrections for issues that were seen in the first go-around and making the corrections. And I saw everything run incredibly smoothly, and I heard nothing but positive feedback from the residents as they came in and saw what they were doing and how they were doing it. So great job over the past year, great job on this presentation. I really do appreciate it. I have a couple of questions, um, and it's actually Mr. Kearns brought up one, which was a, a great one. Um, can you answer, so if, if more people do come for in-person voting, what kind of capacity can the middle schools or the, the three voting centers handle versus the 12 smaller? And you don't need to answer this now, but I think it may be a question that um people will want to understand is how much more capacity? Because I know there wasn't a line at East Middle, um, with the exception of maybe a once or twice, and it was a, maybe a one or two-minute line, people waited to register as, or not register, but check in. Um, so how much more capacity could the, the middle schools and the high school handle for in-person voting versus the smaller ones? Um, the each individual, you know, for lines and that type of thing. And then the second question I had is, do we know when the legislation that you have is gonna go up for a vote? Is there, is there a date when that legislation for mail-in balloting and um early uh voting is gonna be voted on? Or is it, is there any definitive dates? Because that won't make a decision, obviously, if we, of when we vote, because I think that is an important part of it in order to have everybody be inclusive, that mail-in ballot and um early, early voting is probably a very critical piece in determining how we go forward with this.
Okay, on the
Clark, do you want to address that?
Okay, on the questions about uh when will the legislative vote? Okay, as I stated in the um, the proposal presented by the Secretary of State, as well as a um proposal uh presented by the Mass Town Clerks Association, they include seven days of early voting in person for primary elections. They include 14 days of early voting in person for state general elections. And when I talk about uh the state primary elections, it also encompasses, but now municipal elections, that you'd have the seven days of early voting. Okay, that's in person. Okay, then what they're advocating is that at least 28 days before election day, the, the election officials in every municipality will have to mail out um anyone who requested a mail, a vote-by-mail ballot.
Jim, do you have a date? We, we don't know when the legislature is voting on this.
That's my question, sorry.
Yeah, we're never gonna know what it is. These are, they're all in play.
We, we don't know the date, so I think this seems to be something everybody is asking. So I think if we invite our leg, and oh, but I reached out to one of our legislatures, nothing scheduled yet. Bill filing deadline was last Friday, so bills are in the process, making their way to committees for public hearings. That's from Representative Mark Cusack. So I'd like if we invite Representative Cusack, Senator Keenan, and Senator Timblett to a meeting. Hopefully the next one, I know they're all busy, but we'll get them on the agenda to discuss this if this does not go for a vote tonight. But that seems to be what all the councils thus far who have spoken are looking for more information. But I want to continue the discussion. Council Connors, are you good with your questions, comments?
Your second question was about the capacity of the, the voting centers. Each of the voting centers could fully handle um quite a bit more voters entering into the buildings and to make it successful. Uh, in fact, as in one of the presentations, I said, we could do one central voting center at the high school. There is enough capacity to allow all voters go to that one central location to vote. And what makes it uh this happen is not that um we could check in people using the old methods. We're using the new technology.
Right.
That's what's making it achievable.
Okay, no, thank you. That answers all my questions. Thank you, President Hume.
All right, Council Mackin, you are next. Go ahead.
Um, thank you, Madam President. And as the President just said, I think it seems like we're leaning to not voting on this tonight. But I just wanted to say, Mr. Casey, and I know me and you talked about this last time I saw you. Um, it's a great presentation even without it. I have a lot of respect for you. You're good at your job. I know you take it very seriously. Um, and I know you've definitely put your time and research into this. So I really don't have a problem with um consolidating whether it's three or six. Um, I don't like the idea of one. I doubt anyone does. Um, but just thank you. And also, you know, to Mr. K's point, he is a constituent of mine who I have a lot of respect for as well. And, you know, with the data analysis, there is a lot to be learned, but, you know, it'll be you and him doing the legwork on that. I know I'm not gonna be, and Council Sasha said maybe he would. Um, if something big came out of that, if you guys were to go down that route, you know, it would be taken into consideration. But um, you know, right now, I, I approve, uh, you know, what he suggested.
Thank you kindly.
Thank you. Council Ringus, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. And I'll just quickly say again, uh, thank you, Clerk Casey, for your work on this. Um, obviously, it was very thorough. When you came before us um a few months back, um, I was one of the folks that was a little hesitant to um going down to the districts based on COVID. Um, I had the feeling that if we perhaps went to fewer voting centers, that we'd be consolidating people. Um, and I was worried about what that impact might be, and it's clear that there was no COVID cases traced back. So that's kudos to you for recognizing that and our health department and the workers at the polls. Um, I think in all three pieces of our legislation that you sort of held up, from what I, what I reviewed, I think each and every one of them has some sort of um reference to same-day voter registration. So I guess the question I have is, if we did have same-day voter registration, would you be able to do that at, at polling places if we went to just three?
Okay, if we went to same-day voter registration, uh, I would have to hire, if we stay with the polling locations, the 12 polling locations, I would have to hire 12 additional people to manage the individual, the, the potential voters, to come in, to sign them up, to do some research prior to issuing them a ballot. If we go with the three voting centers, it's three individuals that I would have to hire. So there's a cost savings right there. It can be done. We're using the technology of iPads and some of the legislation I was reading this evening. Um, this, this state is promising that they would put a voter information system in each of the polling locations. Um, they may be hesitant to go with 12, but I'm sure if we were down to three, that we'd be have direct access into their database to find out is, did a voter come from another community who voted in that other community and then just signed up again this morning at our community? So there'll be a lot of ways of checking for the integrity of the election process. And that's a, that is a big concern as you add other voting options, is the integrity of the election. And like I said, the technology that we have implemented for the uh early voting sites um worked wonderful because we did find people who voted in person, early voted in person, show up on election day. And people who mailed ballots back to us by mail, it showed up on election day. But uh, I, to me, it was more attributable not to um forgetfulness. I think we all have a level of that. Sometimes we don't know, know what we did five minutes ago. But I don't think it's really was truly um anyone's considered effort of not voting properly. But if they did vote twice, that is wrong. And with the technology and having additional resources in one's location, it allows you to share those resources to help get you through uh this problem. And to me, the big fear is same-day registration, we're gonna open up a new pit of worms, and we, we need to have the proper staffing uh and knowledgeable staff. I only have four people to run the elections. I have to keep one back here at Town Hall uh to manage uh the, the events there. And um, we could, I, we can't be in 12 places, and that's the problem I have.
Correct. All right, well, thank you for that answer. Um, I think like many of the councils, and I think it seems the way that this, this is leaning, um, that we might end up tabling it. Um, I think there is some good in consolidation. I think cost savings is something we have to look at. We know that we might have some lean years coming, that the, the full extent of what COVID-19 is gonna do to our budgets is something we have to be mindful of. Um, from being on the school committee for a period of years, or, you know, along with Councilor Hume, um, I, I'm aware that uh the elementary school usage was something that has constantly been a security, a security concern. Um, not that it's totally eliminated when you're still using schools, but I think it's something that we've, we've constantly worried about. We've seen other communities where there's been accidents involving children on voting days. So that's something, so seeing Dr. Hackett's recommendation, um, I, I think there's some weight behind that. Obviously, Chief Dubois was on earlier, um, speaking of, of, of mitigating overtime costs, and anytime we could limit that, I think um, that's important. So the use of less officers is, is something that would obviously, again, go towards the budget. Um, I did note um some of the folks from our Disability Commission, um, that, you know, it isn't necessarily required that we get folks to polls. But I think we do have to be mindful of, we, we can always go above and beyond. But in going above and beyond, we then are sort of, have to worry about the, the potential liabilities we face. So I do think there is some further discussion or research that we could do in terms of ensuring um that anybody who wants to be in a poll in-person voting has the ability to be in a poll voting. Uh, mail-in ballots may continue, um, and that, that could be the wave of the future. Maybe it is, maybe it isn't. But if it is, there are still people like myself or other folks that just want the experience of going in and, and casting the ballot in person. I think we have to do everything in our power, mindful of liabilities to get that done. So uh, thank you again, Mr. Casey, for your work, and thank you for anyone who has contributed with the questions tonight.
Thank you, Council Ringus. Any other counselor? Anyone from the public for the last time? Okay, seeing none. All right, so what I think should happen is, it seems to be we all want more information. Uh, and one, I'm gonna ask you, Jim Casey, if the vote goes, which I think it's gonna go to table. Can you get us some more information, some data, number one, on the numbers from the elections last year? But also, there isn't a lot of information on the six polling places, so there was some requests for that. Can we get some more information on what it would look like for going to six polling places? So I think we're looking at three and six, and then I'll reach out to the legislatures to get them in, to give us an update. Representative Cusack said he would be uh with us too. So uh, we'll work on some dates, hopefully, uh, in the next one. Um, and with that, I will take a motion, either to move with the vote or to table?
Uh, Madam President, I would move to table, um, order number 20071. Town clerk polling locations are taking up any action relative thereto.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded to table order 20071. We're not gonna put any specific date out there, uh, because it's when we get the information back. Is everyone okay with that? Okay, uh, Clark, Samina, roll call vote to table this order, please.
Council Barica.
Yes.
Council Connors.
Aye.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume.
Aye.
Council Mackin.
Aye.
Council O'Brien.
Aye.
Council Ringus.
Aye.
Council Ryan.
Aye.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
Nine in favor to table.
Is unanimous. Thank you all. Thank you, Clerk, Clerk Casey, um, for all your work and your patience on this. Uh, moving on in the agenda, item 21001, National Grid petition, Pearl Street continuation of order 17042, or take up any action relative thereto. I will refer to Council Ryan, the Chairman of the Committee on the Department of Public Works, for a recommendation from that committee.
Thank you, Madam President. Earlier this evening, the Committee on the Department of Public, Public Works, it's been a long night, uh, met. And uh, we discussed this matter with DPW staff and National Grid. Uh, back in about 2017, National Grid did work on Pearl Street, where they put in a new gas main, and then they had um their workforce go on strike. And the town of Braintree needed to repave the street, so they did. And um, National Grid needs to go back in and take people off the old gas line and put them on the new gas line. And if we don't do that, the old gas line already has several, um, what they would categorize as grade-two leaks. And the top, the National Grid will have to go in and rip the street up anyway, without our permission, to fix these leaks. So um, DPW staff have come up with a well-thought-out plan where National Grid uh would do the what they need to do, put all of the gas users on the new gas line. They would eliminate the old gas line, abandon it. It would no longer be um an issue or a concern or a safety matter. And uh, we would have a new gas, everybody on the new gas line, and the um, gas company would, National Grid would do curb-to-curb reconstruction on the roadway. So it's not a perfect scenario because there is gonna be some disruption to folks. But um, I, uh, one of our councils has been involved with National Grid, has asked them to do um extensive uh communication and reaching out to uh the residents to make sure that they have a public meeting via Zoom, where people can ask questions and then um send letters to all the residents and let them know what's gonna happen. And also let people know if they want to connect to the gas line now, now's the time to do it. While there's gonna be, um, the roadway is gonna be opened up. So although it's not a perfect scenario where we're going in and opening up a street, um, there's gonna be disruption, but they're gonna put the street back in a condition that's gonna be the condition it's in now. And it's, they're gonna let people know, there's gonna be good communication on this. So the DPW um subcommittee uh met earlier this evening and voted unanimously to make a favorable recommendation to the full council on this matter.
Thank you, Council Ryan. I just want to also recognize in attendance with us here tonight is Jim Arsenal, uh, Town of Braintree's Director of DPW and Assistant DPW Director John Thompson, as well as many representative of National Grid. Thank you all for your patience tonight and being with us here so late. I appreciate it. Uh, with that, is there anybody uh from the mayor's office, DPW, that would list to speak on this matter?
Madam President, I would defer to Director Arsenal on this uh motion. Thank you.
Director Arsenal, go ahead.
Yes, um, I think um, uh, Councilor Ryan said it uh very well, that they are, they did, uh, you know, the National Grid had a situation where they were on strike and we couldn't, you know, uh, hold back for that time period. So we decided to, to pave the road. The mayor, uh, the former mayor, I moved forward with that. And um, I think that the mitigation that they have um, as far as the road repair is, is pretty extensive. And I think it will be, you know, the best, you know, like as, as Councilor Ryan said, there will be some disruption, but there will be making every effort to, to mitigate that as best they can.
Thank you. Anybody from National Grid want to speak on this?
Good evening, Madam President, and thank you, uh, thank you for letting us um stay on and join in. A lot of great information, a lot of great activity occurring in the uh, in Braintree. So uh, I believe the, the Chair Ryan um did, did go through an awful lot. Um, and as he'd mentioned, uh, Ward Counselor, uh, and I have had many conversations and talked about the communication. So in lieu of the evening and the hours, I, I feel comfortable what the DPW committee put forth.
Thank you. Any counselor wish to speak on this? Counselor Barica, I saw yours first. Go up, go ahead.
Thank you, President Hume. Um, yeah, I, I wanted to just um, you know, let, let the council know um and, and thank National Grid for their willingness to collaborate um so that the residents living on and in the immediate neighborhoods off of Pearl Street will be well informed of this project. Um, there are two neighborhoods that can only exit onto Pearl Street. Um, they were, go, they're going to be added to the notification list so that they are aware of the upcoming work, the Fountain Street neighborhood and the Crawford Road and Crawford Street neighborhood. Um, so I think while, you know, it is no small feat that this work is expected to last from four to six weeks. It's, it is going to be disruptive. Um, we also need to balance that inconvenience with the need for safe and reliable natural gas, uh, as well as the upgrades will provide an environmental benefit for fixing some of the leaking pipes. So um, I will be voting in favor of this motion tonight, and again, um, appreciate National Grid's um accessibility and willingness to work with the neighborhoods.
Thank you, Council O'Brien. Go ahead.
To find the unnew, thank you, Madam President. Um, kudos to the DPW uh organization, I mean, committee for getting the curb-to-curb. Um, and of course, Director Arsenal, for your uh continued effort. Thank you very much, National Grid. Um, the only question I have is, uh, do we know how many connections are um up for, I guess, renewal, if you will, or, or a new connection, uh, that may be in the documentation? If it is, I'll apologize, but I'll apologize, but I'd like that that information. And then the other question of concern I had was that there was mention about. Potential for, and I may use the wrong word, but I'm going to use it anyway because that's what it sounds like to me, soliciting new customers to. You know, add on to this work while it's there, and I believe that we can't do that. So if someone could correct me, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Madam President, I'd be happy to jump in on that for the. For the transition off the existing main that will will be taken out of service and transferred over to the new main, there are roughly thirty services. Thirty existing customers that we have to transition over to the new. Majority of those will be actually right in the street. So there'll be some reason that. With regard to the folks that are on Pearl Street that may not be connected to natural gas. But may have a reason to think about doing it. It would be part of our a butter notices that were were to go out indicating that if they had a question or desire. To join or to cook up to natural gas. Now would be the time since we would be doing the curb to curb paving. Probably late summer after, you know, letting the road settle for a little bit. And then once it is paved, there is a moratorium about digging up for a new connection. So it would not be a solicitation from the from Braintree itself. It would be. Part of our communication that if you were thinking about doing it, now's the time. Otherwise, after the new paving is done, it would be that moratorium or getting a connection. Hopefully that answers your question.
Council O'Brien, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Carroll, for that information. I sat on the DPW committee prior. And I recall this coming up several times, people wanting to notify. A butters and whatnot of work that that was going on and. I really would like the solicitor to just at least have a review of that. And if it's if it's something that since it's National Grid, they can do it and we can't, that's fine. But. I recall a lot of noise about our solicitation and and the ability for us not to do it since this is a. A town owned roadway. So if we can do it, that's awesome. I think it's tremendous. But. If not, then I think that it just needs to be reviewed and I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Carroll.
Madam President.
Yep, I know Council Flaherty has her hand raised, but I'm going to let Council Ryan address this because I know he's going to comment on that. Go ahead.
So. We're we're doing this work right now. The streets are being opened right now. We're letting the neighborhoods and residents know everything going on right now. Now's the time to tell them if you want to connect to the gas line, connect. It's that simple. It's not when we pave it all over. And it's all on the ground. You can't get to it. And then somebody says, oh, can I connect? Too late. So all that's all we're doing. If you want to connect, connect now. We're being courteous and letting them know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Flaherty, go ahead. Thanks for your patience.
Oh, thank you. It's always a it's always a significant disruption and inconvenience to have have roads. Torn up, especially especially when they have been relatively recently paved. And I know that people who live along Pearl Street and and. Anybody who drives along it regularly, which is probably most of us. Remember that it was recently paved and that job took a long time. And this this is no small job. I mean, it is four to six weeks depending on on weather. So it's going to be a significant thing and that's just the first round. Then they'll wait for the for the. The work to settle before they return in the summer to do more work. So and finish it. So residents should understand that this is a two phase project and not imagine, first of all, that when the first round is done, that it's totally completed. Because sometimes I hear from residents who are upset that things are being repaved. After they've just been paved and they can't understand that. But it's really one job divided into two important parts. At any rate. The only viable reason to do this is I wanted to underline it is that it's for safety reasons. This is not being done to help people. Attached to gas, give them an opportunity for that. This is being done just for safety reasons and also for some environmental reasons to. To stop the gas leaks that are happening under the road that they know are happening that are there. And and the other, the last comment I would like to add is that I was pleased as a member of the DPW committee to see that a number of stipulations have been attached to this, including. That the there has to be a a video survey documenting the existing conditions so that we can be sure that they're done properly. And then also there's a pretty.
We lost your audio. I can't hear her. Council Flaherty, we cannot hear you.
Please, there's a good reason for doing it and I I'm going to give it my support.
All right, thank you. We did lose your audio for a little bit. We got the gist of what you were saying. Thank you. Any other counselor wish to speak on this? Seeing nine, is there a motion?
Madam President, I would move that under order twenty one zero zero one, the National Grid petition as to Pearl Street, the National Grid be granted the ability to continue work on Pearl Street. As previously petitioned under order one seven zero four two. The National Grid proposing to finish a project which was never fully completed due to the lockout. In two thousand seventeen, National Grid installed a new four inch plastic gas main in Pearl Street. But never made the final connections to activate it. The remaining proposed work includes the digging of approximately thirty service trenches. To transfer existing gas customers to the new gas main and four connection pits to tie the new gas main to existing gas mains. At the project limits to activate it, all of that being conditioned upon conditions put forth by the Braintree Electric Light Department and the Department of Public Works.
Second.
There's been a motion made. Do we do we need, Sue, do we need to read all of that that's underneath that?
If you don't need them to, they don't have to.
Okay, okay. There's been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Council Ryan. Clerk Sumino, roll call vote, please.
Council Barica.
Yes.
Council Connors.
Aye.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume. Council Mackin.
Aye.
Council O'Brien.
Aye.
Council Ringus.
Aye.
Council Ryan.
Aye.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
That is unanimous. Thank you all. Thank you all, National Grid, for being here in attendance and to our DPW staff. I know it's late. I appreciate your patience and all your expertise and input on this. As I stated earlier, you're more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but completely understand if you'd like to exit.
Well, thank you, Madam President, and all members of the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Take care. All right, moving on to reports from committees, item zero zero five two one, Council Brian, Committee on Education and Library or take up any action relative thereto. I will defer to Council Brian.
Thank you, Madam President. Clerk Sumino, I'm not sure if my report made it to the final cut, but the one I opened on Dropbox didn't have my report in it.
It didn't.
No.
Apologize, I.
No, that's okay. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that there is a report that was filed and so. It was in essence a summary and I'm going to summarize the summary. Of the E and L meeting, which is education and library. We met on two items. I'll give you the date in a second. But it was oh four five two zero Council Brian and analysis. Of the twenty 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 one pandemic school reopening or take up any action relative there too. And number two is oh five three twenty Council Brian Maintenance Department Recommendation or take up any action relative there too. Now I'm going to open it, which is always fun trying to. Juggle these balls here. But okay, so the meeting date was December twenty second at five thirty. The counselors in attendance were all the members of the committee. And we opened up, of course, with the analysis. And the reason for the analysis call was similar to what was presented earlier by a previous speaker. Which was some concerns about opening schools and the pandemic and making sure that everything was. Copacetic. I tried to get the leadership of the school committee. To meet with us. However, several attempts were made and unfortunately, no one. I'm sorry. Unfortunately, the person that was recommended to us. Which was the superintendent. Did not attend. So in the in the fact that the meeting had already been delayed by. Several months, I just decided to hold the meeting. So it was just disappointing that we couldn't have the subject matter expert. Attend, but I did want to congratulate all those that opened the school. You know, on on time and the way they did it. I know that they had established committees, they had extensive presentations. Fortunately, school committee Chair Tom Devon attended and he acknowledged our appreciation. And also noted the many iterations of the opening plans. And of course, the other members also discussed praise for those that were involved in opening. Ultimately, in both of the matters before the committee, there were no decision decisions to be made. It was simply report. And so what you are presented with and when you receive it is, in fact. What I term a progress report as appropriately recorded in Robert's Rules of Order. It is is allowed to have a progress report. And of course, we have Rule twenty three. Which says that we should bring reports forward to the committee. So no decisions, but. This is the progress report. The second item was my maintenance department recommendation, which I had submitted to the mayor. Quite a while back and and had been waiting for some input from the executive branch. And ultimately, there's a clause in our. As you know by now, because this was all forwarded, there's a clause in the charter that allows us to create a maintenance department. And I just want to make no. Two things. Number one is that I'm using the clause from maintenance department because that's what the clause in the charter uses. But we have a facilities department and so my my mindset is more geared towards facilities, not maintenance. But just so you know, that's where my mindset went when I saw the opportunity. Ultimately, as you've seen by now, if you've read it, the legal review. Points out that this is possible, but it's only possible if the school department and the school committee approves it. I think it's incumbent upon them to at least review it. I've asked the mayor to do that in my letter. And I think since I believe since the mayor sits on the school committee. That it would be incumbent upon him to do that. We don't have any. Any. Direction, I mean, any legislative authority over the school committee that I could find. So. It's completely up to the school committee for to take the action and take the consideration. But I've had, I've asked the mayor to do that. I believe that both members of the committee, other than myself. Vice Chair Ringus, who is actually on the O and R Committee, as you know, the Chairman of the O and R. He saw some potential here, but of course, needed some legal input, which he now has. And collective bargaining is one of the things that he raised concern. And Member Bariki also discussed the need for maybe some consideration by. The executive branch. So we await for the executive branch. School Chair Devon was on the call. He provided his input. And the Department of Public Works Director Jim Arsenal was on there. Thank you for attending for all those that attended. It's important that Director Arsenal pointed out that the spreadsheet that was provided was provided by our auditor. And the intent was not to commingle funds, which he pointed out may have been possible, but. There was no intention on that. The directive was simply to find anywhere where there was. Either maintenance or facilities funds that might be leveraged and used and brought into this centralized maintenance function if it gets created. And so really. I I wanted to bring this forward. There are other committees that can review it. But next steps were for the legal review, which is now in. And the school committee to take it under their direction and make a decision. And of course, it has to be considered by the mayor. And I was hoping that the mayor, hope is not a good strategy, but that the mayor would be the person who would address it with the school committee. Committee adjourned by thanking all that attended and thanking Clerk Sumino for supervising recording, capture and all meeting logistics. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council O'Brien. So when this was put before the council for a referral. Typically, and I'm an ass of all councils, when we're doing referrals, we should be getting a legal review of it for language, for all that, for what's actually under our authority. We have three referrals that are being. Either referred to discuss tonight that I I've requested legal reviews of. Counselors, one of them moving forward, there's issues with all of them. This was one of them. There's things in it that don't lie within our authority. So the memo that the legal review that I had asked came out to us. You all should have received this in an email. It was dated February seventeenth. From Crystal Huff Assistant Town Solicitor. So I thank her for that. As stated, there's other items on the agenda with referrals that have issues with legal for. Content and whatnot. So I ask that if you are putting something forward in the future, you go through the proper channels, get the legal review first. So all the information is accurate and under our authority to actually move forward and take action on it, just so we don't have to be having all these. It it's going to go through the review, but anyway, so I'll leave it at that if you can go. But thank you, Council Brian, for that update. Moving on to new business, there is none. And now moving on to referrals. I will, Council Ringus, for the referrals to Department of Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President. I would refer twenty one zero zero four National Grid petition Ivory Street or taking up any action. Relative thereto to the Committee on the Department of Public Works.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Council Ryan. A roll call vote, please.
Council Barica.
Yeah.
Council Connors.
Aye.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume.
Aye.
Council Mackin.
Aye.
Council O'Brien.
Aye.
Council Ringus.
Aye.
Council Ryan.
Aye.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Moving on to referrals to the Committee on Ordinance and Rules. We have a few. I don't know if you want to do these all together, Council Ringus.
I'm going to do the, I'll do the rules once together. Yes. So, Madam President, I would refer to our Committee on Ordinance and Rules Order zero zero two two one. Council Sasha slash Council Connors Amendment to Bylaw Section one thirty five dash one one zero one. Or taking up any action relative thereto. Also referring zero zero three two one Council Sasha. Include your amendment or taking up any action relative thereto.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Council Ryan. Clerk Sumino, roll call vote, please.
Council Barica.
Yes.
Council Connors.
Aye.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume.
Aye.
Council Mackin.
Aye.
Council O'Brien.
Aye.
Council Ringus.
Aye.
Council Ryan.
Aye.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
That's nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. And referrals to the Committee on Ways and Means, Council Ringus.
Thank you, Madam President. I would refer twenty one zero zero three Mayor Reappointment of Joseph Keeney to the Braintree Cultural Council. Or take up any action relative thereto. Order twenty one zero zero five Mayor Request to Approve the Fiscal Year twenty twenty one Capital Plan. Or take up any action relative thereto, which would be a public hearing. Twenty one zero zero six Mayor Request for Appropriation Fiscal Year twenty twenty one. General Fund Capital Budget or taking up any action relative there to also a public hearing. Twenty one zero zero seven Mayor Request for Appropriation Fiscal Year twenty twenty one Enterprise Funds Capital Budget or taking up any action relative there to also a public hearing. Twenty one zero zero eight Mayor Request for Appropriation Fiscal Year twenty twenty one Capital Budget. Other available funds or take up any action relative there to also a public hearing. Twenty one zero zero nine Mayor Appointment of Kimberly Crowhaugh to the Planning Board or taking up any action relative there to.
Second.
And a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Council Ryan. Clerk Sumino, roll call vote, please.
Council Barica.
Yes.
Council Connors.
Aye.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume.
Aye.
Council Mackin.
Aye.
Council O'Brien.
Aye.
Council Ringus.
Aye.
Council Ryan.
Aye.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
That is unanimous. Thank you. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, March second twenty twenty one at seven thirty. I want to thank all of those in attendance tonight for all your input, for all your feedback, for staying with us late tonight. And all the panelists who have since gone, but appreciate them, all their hard work and to Nicole Taub for being with us throughout the entire meeting and for your knowledge and. Expertise. We appreciate that. And to all your councilors, thank you so much. Have a good.
Madam President. President.
Yep.
It just seems like, I don't know what it is. It just seems like, I don't know what it is, but it just seems something a little different about Sue Sumino tonight. I can't put my finger on it. I don't know if she seems like a little more mature or, I don't know. Happy birthday, Sue.
Happy birthday, Sue.
Thank you.
Happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday.
That was beautiful. Thank you. Charlie, thank you for that interruption. Sue, I'm going to talk to you about this because I talked to you many times today. You didn't say a word. I'm so sorry. Happy birthday.
No need to get any older.
Thank you for that. All right, without, we're going to leave it at that. Is there a motion to adjourn? Should I end on Sue's birthday?
So moved, Madam President, happy birthday, Clerk Sumino.
Council Baraka.
Yes.
Council Connors.
Aye.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume.
Aye.
Council Mackin.
Aye.
Council O'Brien.
Happy birthday, aye.
Council Ringus.
Aye.
Council Ryan.
Aye.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. We are adjourned tonight, everybody.
Bye.
Bye.